...of the Albany Unified School District. May we have a roll call?
President Trutain.
Here.
Vice President Dos.
Here.
Trustee Clark.
Here.
Trustee Hinckley.
Here.
Trustee Jerran.
Here.
Student Board Member Weinstein.
Here.
Student Board Member Mala.
Here.
Thank you. May we have the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its cause.
Student Board Members, could you read the AUSD Mission and Vision Statement and the Board of Education Meeting Norms?
The mission of Albany Unified School District is to provide excellent public education that empowers all to achieve their fullest potential as productive citizens. AUSD is committed to creating comprehensive learning opportunities in a safe, supportive, and collaborative environment, addressing the individual needs of each student. Meeting Norms. One, maintain a focus on what is best for our students. Two, show respect, never dismiss or devalue others. Three, be willing to compromise. Four, disagree when necessary agreeably. Five, make a commitment to effective deliberation, each one listening with an open mind while others are allowed to express their points of view.
Six, participate by building on the thoughts of a fellow Board Member. Seven, make a commitment to open communication and honesty, no surprises. Eight, commit the time necessary to govern effectively. Nine, be collaborative. Ten, maintain confidentiality, which leads to the building of trust. Eleven, look upon history as lessons learned, focus on the present and the future.
Thank you. There was no action taken in closed session. Now we are looking for approval of the agenda. Do any Board Members have a comment?
Do we need to report on action from yesterday's closed session?
Point of order. Do we need to report on actions taken in closed session at our special meeting of yesterday?
What should have happened yesterday was when you came out of closed session, you should have gone back into open session and reported out. Did that occur?
No.
Okay. So then what I would recommend is that it can be reported out. I've never done this before, but I would say just for the record, maybe what the Board President can do is say the report out that you're going to do now is from the closed session from yesterday and then report out what you did.
Okay. This report out is from our closed session of April 29th at our special meeting. The Board decided on the set of questions to ask Superintendent Finalists and decided on a set of Superintendent Finalists to invite for interviews. Thank you. Now, back to this agenda issue. Are there any items that need to be pulled from the agenda or can I get a motion to approve the agenda? I move we approve the agenda. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And that brings us to item G, recognition of the Teacher Appreciation Week.
Thank you, President Trutain, members of the Board. I'm going to turn this over to Director of Special -- excuse me, Director of Human Resources, Cheryl Cotton, to provide the Board with this very important and well-deserving recognition.
Yes, we're preparing for Teacher Appreciation Week. It occurs May 6th through the 10th, and that's a time for us to show our love and appreciation for the folks who are in the classrooms, working with our students every single day, providing a great educational experience as well as life lessons. So I think that the role of the teacher is extremely important, and this is our time to say yea and thank you. So for all, please keep in mind, May 6th through the 10th, we will not have a Board meeting until then, until after that, so I wanted to make sure that we were recognizing and aware ahead of time. I'd like to read the resolution. So whereas the Governing Board of the Albany Unified School District and Superintendent Williams wish to commend and express their appreciation to the teachers, counselors, program specialists, psychologists, speech-language therapists, and all certificated staff who serve students of the Albany Unified School District. And whereas the Governing Board and Superintendent recognize that unique and highly specialized skills are required to meet the varied needs of the young people served by district instructional programs and are proud of the success that these programs have achieved. And whereas the certificated staff who daily touch our students' lives have a tremendous influence on their hopes, aspirations, and future success, making each student capable of taking up the challenges of life, and not only guide our students academically, but also instill moral and ethical values. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Governing Board of the Albany Unified School District proclaims May 6th through May 10th, 2019, to be Teacher Appreciation Week. Be it further resolved that the Governing Board of the Albany Unified School District encourages all members of our community to join with it in personally expressing appreciation to our teachers for their dedication and devotion to their work.
Thank you, Director Cotton. I want to give a big round of applause to our teachers.
And President Trutain, usually one of our ATCO presidents is here, but in their absence, I've asked if teacher, Special Education Teacher Rich Ritchie would accept this Appreciation Week resolution on behalf of the Albany Teachers Association.
Thank you. Thank you very much for everything that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ritchie.
Thank you.
Mr. Ritchie?
Since this is a resolution, it needs to be signed by the President of the Board.
Because this is a resolution, anyone have a vote?
We are voting on this as well. Yes, thank you.
So we have the opportunity to vote on this. May I have a roll call, please?
President Trutain.
Aye.
Vice President Dos.
Aye.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Hinckley.
Aye.
Trustee Jerran.
Aye.
Student Board Member Weinstein.
Aye.
Student Board Member Mala.
Can I ask Director Cotton one question? Do you do something similar to acknowledge other staff, classified staff, et cetera?
Classified staff appreciation is coming, I believe, the week of, it's mid-May, and so we will be discussing that and have a resolution at our next Board Meeting.
I think that there's various events happening at some of the schools, teacher appreciation lunches and stuff. I encourage everyone to show some love for our teachers.
Definitely. Thank you.
That brings us to item H on the agenda, the Consent Calendar. Would anyone like to remove items from the consent calendar before we vote on it? Nope. Okay. Then...
I move we approve the consent calendar.
I second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
That would bring us to Board and Superintendent Reports.
Thank you, President Trutain. I just want to remind the community that we still have two very important bills that are pending but have moved on out of the Education Committee, and that is both the Special Education Bill moved on as well as the Marasucci Bill to increase funding to the local control funding formula. So I don't want us to rest on our laurels. I want to make sure that we are still writing letters and making phone calls and advocating for the passage of both of these bills because they will bring more money to Albany. And I think there's another bill that is still pending, and that has to do with the state bond monies for facilities. Thank you.
Board Members, any reports?
I wanted to, this is separate from the School Board Report, but I wanted to commend Ms. Ritchie and the high school for sending an email out after the shooting in a synagogue because I think that it's really important that we're acknowledging that, especially in school spaces, because as a Jewish student, it's sometimes hard to go back to a public space after something very difficult has happened to your community, and I know that's very similar for many other communities. And so I would like to compliment and thank our high school administration and Ms. Ritchie for sending that email out because I know that it makes a difference to a lot of students and is something that we've been really wanting for a very long time, acknowledgement of suffering. And so I would like to give a thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up. I have a small item. I was not able to attend last Friday night a meeting of the University Village Residents' Association, but they did meet with Principal Jorgensen of Ocean View Elementary and discussed some of their needs given the temporary housing situation for next year. I got an email today from one of those residents saying that they would like to lobby AC Transit to create a bus line, so I wanted to bring that to the attention of the Board. The bus line would circle through Albany and end up at El Cerrito Plaza. I hope that we can, when we talk about agenda items, maybe we can talk about possibly agendizing a resolution that they could use that might help them get that bus line. Any other Board Member reports? Then that moves us to Student Board Member Reports.
Okay. So at Albany High School, the Dance Department honors our heroes and legends with their spring dance concert, and shows will be held this Thursday and Friday. They're really good, so I really recommend you guys go. And high school students have been working hard to prepare for their AP tests, which will begin on May 7th and end on May 17th. Spring sports teams such as baseball, softball, tennis, and track and field are having their T-Call playoffs games in the next couple of weeks, so come out and support them. And at Albany Middle School, tickets are on sale for the middle school's performance of Once on this Island Junior, and the Black Parent Engagement Committee meeting will be held at AMS on May 7th.
With all elementary schools, today, April 30th, the Elementary Band Extravaganza provides an opportunity for students to show off their musical talent. May 15th will be Parent Information Night at Albany Middle School, and the 2019 Gender Spectrum Conference and Professionals Symposium registration is now open. At Cornell, on May 5th, the Girls on the Run Program will have their 5K finale. On May 14th to the 17th, students will spend time outdoors at Camp Camp Bell, now that we've passed that, at the Outdoor Education Field Trip. And on May 11th, a beach party auction will take place. At Marin, students will be taking S-Back tests from Monday, April 15th to Friday, May 10th. Family Match Night will be held, oh, sorry, that was a typo, Wednesday, May 1st, 6:15 to 7:30 in the Marin NPR. And students will be showing off their moves at the Marin Dance Party on Friday, May 31st. At Ocean View, thank you to the Ocean View PTA for putting on the sock hop. Congratulations to the Memory Book cover winners. First place for Si Woo Ri from Mr. Coons's class, and second place for Sarah Chick from Mr. Diaz's class. On April 27th, School Care hosted Soul Care. Thank you, School Care, for your help in our district. And finally, 5th grade Parent Puberty Ed Night was held on Monday, April 15th.
Thank you. That brings us to item K on our agenda, Persons to Address the Board on Matters Not on Our Agenda. I would like to ask the speakers to limit themselves to three minutes, and look at that, filled out a speaker slip, which is something I have not yet remembered to say even once. Thank you.
You did say it last time.
We did.
And I had it already, so we're good. Thank you. Good afternoon. First of all, thank you for the trust you've placed on the committee members to participate in the Superintendent Finalist Interviews. I want to take a few minutes to talk about process, actually, and use the Superintendent Stakeholder Selection as the example, so I don't want you to get hung up on that specifically. It's more about the process with that as an example. And it has to do with the votes that the Student Board Members provide in the selection process. And it comes down to this, is that if you had picked according to all the votes that you and the Student Board Members gave, then you would have finished the process after Julie sorted the items first by the Board Members' votes and then by the Student Board Members' votes, you would have finished in a few seconds, except for the few seconds that you said you couldn't remember how to do it in Excel because you're a Mac person. And that would have served a few purposes. First of all, in the mission of the Albany Unified School District that you just read, you talk about empowering all to achieve their fullest potential. And that example would have been clear if you empowered your own Student Board Members, who in essence are your colleagues, with different voting powers, so to speak, but they are your colleagues. In your meeting norms, you talk about what is best for students, to show respect, not to dismiss or devalue. Obviously, you were not dismissing or devaluing the students in conversation, but by not taking their votes seriously, in essence, that was a dismissal and a devaluing of their vote. It's in the meeting norms, you talk about effective deliberation. As I mentioned, if you had taken in consideration their votes, you would have finished in a few seconds instead of 15 minutes in an already long meeting. You build on thoughts of fellow Board Members, students are also fellow Board Members. Commitment to govern effectively, again, three seconds versus 15 minutes, that's much faster. And collaboration, collaboration with your fellow student Board Members. So even though this is too late to bring it up for this item, I would like to suggest that in the future, their votes are taken seriously and given proper weight so that you meet the mission and vision of the Board or of AUSD and also the meeting norms. Thank you.
Seeing no one else to speak on items not on the agenda, we will move into review and action. Item 1, Human Resources Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators.
Thank you, President Trutain. The purpose of this item is for the Board to approve the Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators. This is for the 2019-20 school year, and this is an item that we bring annually. So I'll turn this over to Ms. Cotton.
Yes. Thank you, Superintendent Williams. Yes, this is an item that comes to the Board annually. It will be hopefully approved and moved forward to the CTC, the Commission on Teacher Credentialing. What this document is stating to the State Commission on Teacher Credentialing is that we may be in need of emergency CLAD permits. We may be in need of an emergency permit for resource specialists or teacher librarians. These are possible, it's not a definite. We also may be in need of limited assignment permits in the areas of multiple subject, in a variety of areas of single subject, and in special education.
Board Members, would you have any questions for Director Cotton?
Just a quick question. So this covers us in...
In the event that we need it, yes.
So can I get a motion to approve the Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators?
I so move.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
That brings us to Student Services, Board Policy 5117 on Inter-District Attendance.
Thank you. I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Carrie Nierheim, who will be discussing this item.
Good evening, Superintendent Williams, President Trutain, Board of Trustees. This is regarding Board Policy 5117 that we had, there was discussion around at our last Board Meeting. I was asked to bring it back with the proposed changes. I, from my understanding, there were three, and I gave some sample proposed language. That does not need to be the language that you use, but I proposed some language and will capture with the help of Julie and re-watching this meeting to make sure I have it 100% accurate of what you determined. So the first one was a change in the language on the first priority. The second was a change in the language to the second priority, and the third was a change on the fourth priority. And I did receive a question that made me think that I didn't accurately capture one of them. So on the first priority, the current language is students whose parents, guardians, or employees of the Albany Unified School District must work .40 FTE or more. And my understanding was the proposed language was students whose parents, guardians, or employees of the Albany Unified School District must work a minimum of 10 hours. Can I just clarify that? That was correct.
But it's 10 hours a week. I think what was the confusion in the Board questions was, does that just mean you work 10 hours for the district?
Yeah, that makes sense. It makes sense.
I thought that the Board's intention was 10 hours a week.
Okay. So I've noted that. Change to the second priority, students whose parents, guardians are employed by the City of Albany, employed at least 20 hours a week. The proposed language, students whose parents, guardians are employed by the City of Albany, employed at least 10 hours a week. And the third change to the fourth priority, students whose parents, guardians have been business owners, operators within the City of Albany for a period of at least 12 months prior to their application. And the proposed language, students whose parents, guardians have been business owners, operators within the City of Albany for a period of at least one month prior to their application. And so I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. So Board, do you have any questions for Director Nierheim? Then, any further discussion? Or would with the change of adding 10 hours a week for city employees, is this policy acceptable to the Board? Then I need somebody to please move that we pass this policy.
I'd like to make a comment before we do. I've heard a lot of students saying that they do feel as though we are treating inter-district transfer students as ways to get more money for our district, and I think that to some extent, it is true that we do need more money in our district, and that the reason that these inter-district transfer students, the influx of them that we were hoping to have was triggered is because of that need. But I think that it's really important that we're very transparent about the process and also emphasizing that we really do value these students, like Brian was saying last meeting, because I know that there's a lot of students at the high school who are feeling very concerned that we're doing this as a way to get money. And so I think that especially when those students come in, it's really important that we're emphasizing that we value them just as much as we value students who don't live within the district. Me, as a student who lives part-time within the district, part-time outside of the district, I think that that is something that's super-duper important, is making sure that we're showing students that no matter where you live, no matter what your income, your family's income is, whether you can live in Albany or not, that you're valued in our district and that we want to serve you, because I think that's what we're all here to do. And I just want to make sure that, you know, the way that we portray that to the community is just being transparent about this process and acknowledging that it is true that we are in, you know, in need, but also that we value students, like I said.
Thank you for making that comment. I would like to sort of put it back on the Student Board Members and the high school administration. If you might want to discuss whether you think that having some sort of event in the fall, some sort of welcome event, might be a good thing, or whether that might point out the people who are coming in from out of district. But if, you know, we could get some guidance there about how we can make all of the students feel welcome. That's certainly our goal. You know, I think that probably what hasn't been said enough is that we want to welcome students to have the education that we're providing here. So it's not just dollars that are walking in, it's people that are walking in and taking the seat at the desk, and we want to give them the excellent education that Albany High School can provide. As in, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't know, just in response to that quickly, I don't know if some type of welcome event would be effective, because I think that students might feel very odd about that, but I can't imagine that some type of bonding event that isn't specifically pointing out new students, but rather a bonding event similar to like a smaller version of Challenge Day that we did at the high school could be helpful, just as a way to show students, you know, we all have things going on in our lives, we all have been in the position of being in a new place where we don't feel like we belong, and that we're here to welcome you. So maybe something like that. And I know that there's many people at the high school who would be happy to plan and organize something like that, but maybe not something specific to those students. Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
And I think we moved and seconded.
I did hear move.
Did we? Oh, but this is a review and take action, and so given that one change of adding a week, I'm not sure if the Board would feel comfortable simply passing this with the trust that that was going to be included, or if we would like to include this in our next consent calendar so that we can see it written out as is.
It's up to the Board. I think we have the changes that were made, but it's at the pleasure of the Board.
I trust Carrie to put the word in there. Then are we, I mean, can we approve it if, with a pending change?
You can make a motion that it's approved with the changes that were suggested by the Board.
Okay. I move that we approve changes to Board Policy 5117 as listed in the packet with the change on item, on Priority 1, to clarify that it's a minimum of 10 hours a week.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Doctor Nierheim?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
I pinky swear I'll put it in.
Okay. Great. And that brings us to Business Services. Our first item, A, is Albany Unified School District Elementary Breakfast Program.
Thank you, President Trutain. Actually, I'm going to introduce this item. At the previous Board Meeting, a Board Member asked that we bring this back with some information as well as the potential for bringing a breakfast program to our elementary schools, and so we're bringing this back. And there's information that we put in the backup, also gave you the details, the survey that was done, and it was a pretty quick survey. So I really want to thank Julie and Dax for getting that out as quickly as possible. And you can see, if you can scroll down a little bit on the details portion, you can see the survey, there were three, excuse me, two questions and then opportunity for comments, and one was, would your child use a breakfast program at least once per week if it were available? And we have the percentages, they also gave you the raw numbers. And then, do you think an elementary breakfast program should be offered at all school sites? And then you have the percentage as well as the raw numbers. And then you have the percentage as well as the raw numbers. There were several comments, I attached it as attachment, because when you download it from the survey engine, it gives you many, but then it'll say, there are 45 more responses, and they take you to a link. So it's easier for us just to provide the raw data for you. And in the raw data that we provided, I want to make sure that it was the absolute raw data, so you were able to see even when the timestamp was when people responded, and then so you could know what comments were attached to a yes or a no. There were other questions around, what are some things to consider? We added in some of the following factors that needed to be considered when looking at a program across all of our elementary sites. And so we looked at space. And I met with our elementary principals, and I'm really pleased that Sabina is here for our food service program, I think Melissa's here, and I thought I saw Terry. There's Terry, hi Terry. Okay. So they're here to answer the additional questions and to provide more clarifying information for you. So some of the issues we had, one, we're thinking about space. OV at the current site, the program can continue as long as the students are on that site. If you look at Marin, the space is limited, the use of the multipurpose room, it has a conflict with the Tupelo program in the morning. But then there's some additional piece of information about how students do receive food from the Tupelo program. And again, I'm not going to read all this to you, but we provided you information about Cornell. Albany High School, I think we're going to need to have further discussions with Albany High School Administration about how they're going to share space. Albany High has been very good about accommodating as much as possible, and I actually think that it's a real good opportunity when high school students do have contact with elementary kids, because it's good mentorship opportunities. Staffing is the other thing that we need to consider, how much staffing we'll need. And Jackie provided us, if you can scroll down more too, please, it gets to the budget piece, where when you look at what the, some of the costs for the budget would be, there was an option, was a suggestion that was made, is that could we provide a cold breakfast that students could pick up during their morning recess? And so you had to think about where a designated place to eat was. And then we had some issues to consider. Not that there are pluses, deltas, challenges, but there are just some things that we need to consider if we're going to be doing any kind of a program. So one of the key questions was, can the breakfast program be budget neutral? The answer is yes. The district would need a minimum of about 184 participants daily. So I know it was a lot of information that we gave, I wanted to provide the Board with as much that we possibly could, but I'm pretty sure we didn't provide you everything that you may necessarily need, which is why we have our administrators here. So with that, I will open it up to the Board. I know this is a review and action item.
I have a question. Was the survey done with all elementary schools, including Ocean View where the program is already offered?
Yes, they were done for, we tried to get as many of the incoming kinders with the email addresses that we had. We did it all the way, it was K, 1, 2, 3, 4. I don't think we did 5th grade because there were eggs ain't going on, but yes, it was at all sites. All elementary sites.
I think the question that I was trying to get at is how many students responded, or how many parents responded that their students would be utilizing this breakfast program that are not already utilizing it at Ocean View? Do you know?
We did not ask that question. We asked just the question, is it, would your child use it?
Okay.
And that's on the, so you can see there, it was interesting, because the, it almost looks like a flipped bar chart, because it says, you know, would your child use a breakfast program? You do see a few more noes than yeses, but when you go to the next bar graph, you'll see, you know, do you think an elementary breakfast program should be offered? You really see a difference.
I had wanted to ask a question about at Marin and the Tupelo program. If, right now, the Tupelo program is separated, meaning the breakfast comes from Tupelo as opposed to our breakfast program? And could it be changed so that it's, so that it would be coming from the district's program, and that would help in terms of numbers?
Okay, so I hear you asking two questions. One is, is it separate? And two, can it be one program? Two questions.
And how many students would that involve?
So the Tupelo program has, breakfast is included as part of the before-care program. What was the other question? Sorry.
Could you have the food coming to the, could you use the same food service or food for the children who are getting breakfast outside of Tupelo?
Essentially, yes.
But the Tupelo food program, does it come from you? Or do you provide it? Does the district provide it?
ACC, the Albany Children's Center purchases the food.
From?
From Food Services.
Okay, from Food Services. So could we include them in the count, or, you know, change it so that it doesn't seem like it's a separate program, but it would be part of a Marin breakfast program? So that we could include those as part of the participants that we need?
Well, but they pay for it as part of their Tupelo cost.
Yeah.
So it's included in their Tupelo cost.
Exactly.
So the food is from AUSD. So this is, this is AUSD food that they're getting in Tupelo, and it comes from, yeah.
But the subsidized portion of that comes from a different budget. Because ACC is self-sustained, right? It doesn't, it's not the same. So the delivery, like the actual van that brings the food, could bring all the food, because you guys are supplying all the food. But the funding would be different, because it's funded different, because ACC is separate from, I know you guys know that, but.
Could that be changed, potentially?
That would be something to discuss with Anna.
I think something too, that if I could just offer some clarification, there's different types of food that we get from Sabina and from the, from the high school. So what's offered at, during the Tupelo program is like, is, you know, fruit and cereal boxes and milk, which is different from the hot lunches that we see over at the high school, right? In a full-service food program. So there's food and there's food, depends on what kind of food we're talking about. You know, the snack, the thing, the items that are supplied to Tupelo are delivered by the van on a regular basis, they're stored elsewhere, but they're not part of like, of like the hot lunch program that Sabina provides. So it's different. It's a little bit the same, it's a little bit different.
But you said the hot lunch program, what about a hot breakfast program?
Breakfast program, right. So when you were thinking about hot food, I'm thinking like items at the high school that I remember fondly, the breakfast burrito, you know, those kinds of things. Yeah, that's a little different from the kind of service and staffing and preparation that's required for the boxed cereal and milk and, you know, and when I say fruit, I literally mean like I've seen, you know, barrels of apples being provided. The preparation is not as significant than, you know, providing a hot breakfast.
And would the costs differ as well, then?
Oh yeah, well, I'm sure Sabina can speak more to the costs, but I'm sure that the hot lunch program is much more expensive than the cereal and milk and fruit that's provided, is my guess. Yeah.
Could you speak to that, please?
Certainly. Yes, the milk, the cereal and milk and bagels and cream cheese, the prices of those compared to, say, you know, a turkey sausage egg sandwich is, it's double that cost for like a hot sandwich item. So it, sorry, go ahead.
So the cost in here of the $138 a day in labor for the four sites is for a hot breakfast at each site?
Yes, that would be someone coming to the kitchen, heating up the food, and putting it out and holding it hot, so it would be safe to eat and serving it, and.
So this is the cost of replicating the Ocean View program?
Exactly.
At the four sites?
Yes.
So if we did instead something that was more like the Tupelo model, it would be quite a bit cheaper.
A little, food costs would be cheaper, yes, but.
What about the labor costs? Would you need less personnel?
We still need a person to, to serve it and to ring up the students on the POS and to put it away, and we still need the people to receive the order at the central kitchen and transport it to the site. So, you know, that pretty much stays the same. Someone still needs to set it up.
So the Tupelo parents basically pay a, they pay a less expensive rate than, than a student getting a hot breakfast?
You know, it's included in their tuition, and I don't know how that's divided up.
That'd be interesting to look more into that, right? Because if we could add them to, to the 185 needed participants, that might make a difference for the, for a hot breakfast program. Superintendent, is there, who would we negotiate with or talk to about that?
I'm not sure.
Administrators.
Yeah, we'd have to talk to site administrators. I'm unclear about one piece. Adding the Tupelo students to the 185 number count? Are you talking about adding them in addition to the 185?
No, I was hoping if we could move them over and.
And have be part of the count?
Yeah, so they could be a part of that 185, because the issue is that we don't have 185, apparently, students that would be interested. I mean, that was one of the reasons for the survey, and that it's still pretty iffy. But, so that's why I was thinking, well, if they somehow became participants of the hot breakfast program, that would help support the hot breakfast program.
Wait, how? Challenge is then you're pulling money away from ACC, because right now they're paying for tuition at ACC that includes breakfast. So it doesn't, we would need that money to come from a different group of parents in order.
You can't separate it out.
Right.
You can't, yeah.
And I'm not sure that it would be much, if any, cost savings. But I don't know 100% if that's true. I'm still wrestling with what you're asking.
So the, it says 184 to self-sustain, right? 186 said, yes, that they will use it.
Once a week.
Once a week.
So another question that I had, so I got some paperwork saying that my student was going to be taking this S-Back testing. And on the paperwork, it said, make sure that your kids eat a breakfast, because they're going to be taking testing. And so when the kids do good, when the kids do good on the testing, it's good for the district. So the district showed everybody how important breakfast was by reminding every parent to make sure every kid got their breakfast, so that they could do good on their testing. What I'm saying is, I agree with that statement, and I feel like students should do that every day, so that every day could be just as important as when they're taking those tests. And I'd like for somebody to explain to me how that's different, and why we have to have this long conversation about breakfast, and how the S-Back days are more important than all the other educational days that students have at school, because every day's supposed to be important. So they should just eat every day.
Yeah, so that's a great question, Brian, and I'm glad you asked. And I think my understanding of the reason why we're having the discussion is because it was brought to the Board to entertain this idea. The Board's considered it thoughtfully, there's been a lot of conversations with staff to get background information. And so we're here tonight to answer any questions and be a support that we, you know, whatever support we can provide. You know, as, I'm a strong believer in breakfast, it's my favorite meal of the day. And as a beginning teacher, in my first placement, I worked at a school where it was absolutely imperative that I considered that to be a part of my students' learning. So it's not surprising to me that this is coming up here in our district. And what I, if I could wave that magic wand that I still haven't found yet, I would love to be able to provide every student, every staff member, everybody who's working at our schools with breakfast, absolutely. I think that it's a, it's, you know, it's community building, it's a lovely gesture. The only, if you're asking for an opinion, I mean, I'm here to answer questions and clarify, for sure. I think that every day's important for our kiddos. And the S-Back test, yeah, it's important, we look at those scores, but I know that lots of teachers in this district would argue that, yes, every day is important, and it's important to have everybody prepared for each and every day. My question that I just want to raise is around equity, because that's been a focus of what we've been working on in our district, and I think it's an important focus. And I think that what we know about equity is, it's important for us to do our due diligence to provide every student with what they need, right? And I'm, I'm willing to try and do my best to make that happen every single day. And you people will decide if part of that charge means to provide breakfast. I think at the end of the day, this is a values and a priorities question, because yes, we could spend money on breakfast, knowing that, you know, there's a possibility that it could, we could go into deficit spending over it. Or we could take a look at other priorities in the district that we know that we have. I mean, we're having this conversation, you know, in the midst of budget cuts, and all, and that weighs heavily on my mind, when staff members have recently been laid off and more of what could possibly be getting their notice. So, again, a big fan of breakfast and would love to provide it, it's about what our priorities are in our district, and you guys get to decide that. So I wonder if there's, in thinking about what we know about equity, I wonder if there's a way to refine our lens and recognize that equity doesn't mean equality and everybody gets the same. I wonder if there's a way for us to target those in need, and, because I would venture a guess that not every family in this district is in need of breakfast. Yet, for us to provide a program that could, you know, eat from our general fund with deficit spending, I would argue that we could refine our lens and our thinking to target those in need. Anyway, I could talk for a long time about this, and I'm here to clarify, so if you have questions.
I don't want to, I don't want it to seem like we're, because we're all on the same page.
Totally.
I know sometimes it doesn't come across like that.
All good.
And I apologize from the bottom of my heart that it doesn't come across as if we're all on the same page, because I truly feel that we are.
That's not how I'm taking it, just to be clear.
So I know that there are some that are in need and some that aren't in need, and there's, you know, careful ways that we go about making sure that we, that we address that.
Yep.
Right? So like if a student is in need and can't afford the additional cost for a field trip, then we carefully, you know, take care of that. We don't single that student out, we don't pull that student to the side, we just take care of it, and everybody moves on, and nobody in the class knows which students needed help with it and which students didn't. And for the inter-district, you know, transfers, when, you know, President Trutain suggested, maybe we throw like a inter-district transfer party or something, and then obviously, that's not like maybe the best thing, because then it might like, you know, be weird. I think that singling out the students might be uncomfortable for the students, it just seems that you still miss out on students that might not have a financial need for breakfast, but might have some type of other need. So to me, just kind of, you know, offering it universal kind of takes care of that, because you don't have to worry about students feeling a certain way or things like that.
I wanted to try to, to gather a commonality. I mean, I, I think that everybody in this room wants to provide breakfast to any kid who is hungry. We want to, we want to feed anyone who is in need. And so one thing that we do need to look at is, is how we can get to that point, because I think there is commonality there. You know, I'm hearing different things, there's the, there's the hot breakfast program, but then there's also a cold breakfast program that some kids get. And if we're talking about, you know, if we're talking about making sure that everybody's belly full and that they're ready to learn, I think either one of those could do the trick. And also, in the backup, there was an option here, provide a cold breakfast that students can pick up during morning recess, needs a designated place to eat. We haven't yet sort of broached the topic yet about where, you know, these breakfasts would be eaten, and I think that our site administration may have strong feelings about that. But I think if we begin to look at, you know, the, what, what we are. But, I think if we begin to look at, you know, the, what, what we are in common on and, and how we could do that, I think that we might be able to move forward. So, Principal Poole, do you have any feelings about cold breakfast that students could pick up during morning recess? How would that work for your site?
Yeah. So we, so morning recess before school starts at 8:30, if we were to provide a cold breakfast option, what we would need is to have a place for the kids to eat it. Given that the Tupelo program is rapidly expanding and needing more space, our multipurpose room is used by them currently and I, we're all anticipating that there's going to be more children in that program next year. I also know that during rainy days, the students go into the multipurpose room to be out of the rain and, you know, and on assembly days, the multipurpose room is used and, and folks need time to set up for our first assembly that often starts at, at 8:45. So space is definitely an issue. If we wanted to get creative with it, we could set up tables in the overhang areas in between the pods, like we do on rainy days. And while we have that space available, it would just mean that the custodians have to add breakfast cleanup to their list of duties in the morning.
Okay, can Director Feinberg, can you have any words to say about a, a cold breakfast at that time? What would that look like from, from your point of view?
It's, I'm, you know, I'm certainly open to looking at that. You know, with a cold breakfast, I don't, I'm not sure that the storage space could, like, I'm thinking if it could be delivered once a week and then someone has all the food there to set up. I'm, I'm not sure if the storage space is adequate for that. You know, I would just have to look at, at the logistics of that. You know, more so, I think it has to do with the, with the individual sites and what's going on there.
I'm going to ask because we're, this is being recorded. If you can talk right into the mic. So I think we can hear you, but it may not be recording.
Okay.
I guess part of what I'm thinking is, I think, like you said, we're all, we all want to make sure that kids who don't have the opportunity to eat enough before school have that opportunity. Just to frame the parameters of, if we had 15 kids at each site, like we have at Oceanview now, so I think that's likely an overestimate of our usage, we would, if we moved forward, we would need to be prepared to lose, if that's the estimate, 16,000, you know, to spend $16,000 on this program, essentially. I shouldn't say lose. We may decide that's an investment worth making. And I just want to be clear that that's, that's the choice we would be making. If it were less, if it were more, half as many kids, that's a $20,000 expenditure. So I just want to think again about, you know, if we have a, a number of needy kids, we want to make sure that we're targeting them. Is that the, the best way to spend that $20,000 to help them? So that's one framework. And then my other question is just, does, since most of the cost we're talking about is the labor cost, I guess, does switching to a cold breakfast cut that $20,000 down very much or not? Or is that something you would need more time to-
Yeah, I would have to run the numbers, but I, you know, it would be minimal.
Sarah, where, where did you, can you explain to me again where you got the $20,000 from?
So, that was my scratch pad math. But, so if we had 15 kids at a site, at each site, we would spend $16,000. If we had about half as many kids, I think I did the math right, we would be losing-
That's, that seems a little high. Because when you say each site, how many sites are you talking about?
The four.
Well, they already currently have it at one site and that site's going to be gone. So.
The four would be the, the two elementary schools and then the two locations of the other two Oceanview grades. So for part of the year, it would be Oceanview and-
The high school.
And the high school.
And the annex.
For part of the year, it would be Oceanview and the annex. For the rest of the year, it would be the annex and the high school.
So what happens to the current budget of the students that already receive it right now?
That's built into this. And that program, we're, we are spending money to do that because it's not covering its costs.
But, never mind. Do you have, do you have-
So those students at Oceanview, I'm, I don't know how many of them, but not all 15 will be at Oceanview next year.
Well, are they all transferring out of Albany?
No, because some will be at the, different schools, at the annex or the high school.
So, so what happens?
What happens?
So they're included in that estimate of, maybe we have 15 kids at each site, so that's the 15 kids that are using it now, plus 45 more kids that decide to use it every day. Or maybe we have less, maybe we have more. I'm just trying to sort of get us to think about, you know, if we're making an investment in kids, then maybe this is the right investment to make. I'm just trying to make, you know, if we choose to do this, we're approving the possibility of spending a certain amount of money on it.
If we-
Because I think it is unlikely that we're going to get enough kids to pay for it. And that doesn't mean it's a bad idea. I just want to be clear that it's an expenditure.
Well, I guess my question is, I mean, I, I guess it comes down to money, sometimes. Not all the time. Because we spend a lot of money on things that, you know, when people feel like this is important or that's important. Everybody has their own opinion and that's fine. What happens to the students that are currently receiving it? We are now telling them that, or what, what are we telling those students? Because currently, they receive breakfast and they didn't vote on the bond to rebuild their school and to be uprooted and moved to a different place. They just currently receive and then, and then now they don't. I mean, I'm just, I'm just wondering-
You mean if we weren't to continue any of the-
If we don't, if we don't continue or if we decide not to-
They would not have the option.
Yeah, I just-
May I try to answer your question a little bit?
Sure.
We've run the program at Oceanview now for, I'm going to guess, three, three years. It was probably the easiest decision I've made post-experience. But what I've experienced over the three years is the majority of the students who use the program are third through fifth grade, primarily fourth and fifth. They're usually the older kids and because we have the facility available to them, the majority who come in our multipurpose room don't even use a breakfast program. They come in at 8 o'clock because their parents drop them off early. And they come into our multipurpose room and play basketball and handball and soccer and various games over the course of the year during that 15 minutes prior to when we start recess. For the ones who use the breakfast, if, if, if my calculations are correct, third through fifth, you primarily have those who start school at 8:30. So third through fifth, next year, you're going to have the current third and fourth continuing to receive that program because they're still at Oceanview while we're at Oceanview. And as Superintendent Williams said, we'll have to talk more with Alexia at the high school around how that might work at the high school for when we move. So our current third and fourth grade will move up and they'll still be at Oceanview as fourth and fifth grade and those who use it will continue to use it. And the third grade moving up from our current second grade will have the opportunity to use it. Its biggest plus really is that early childhood supervision in the morning and the, and the chance that we have this space for the kids to play with a little extra supervision. The students who leave fifth grade and go up to the middle school will, in all likelihood, take on to whatever breakfast program they have at the middle school. So those kids who are at Oceanview right now, two of the three grades will continue to experience it. One of the grades will move up to the middle school. The younger kids who come and use it, based on the decision you guys make at the annex with the limited space that I have, will try to accommodate those who come in at first and second grade.
Can I ask one question about that?
I'm hoping that helped.
You can, you can go first.
It's quick, just do you, it's only at, before the early bird arrives?
Correct, it's from 8 to 8:15. We don't have the opportunity to use that space at that time because we have programs run in the multipurpose room at the 9:30 hour. So, we haven't heard from families that that was a dire need, but we figured if we could offer it, it was really the ones who really come really early, who, whose parents have to go to work really early, that were the ones really appreciative of getting it. So I, I hope that, that helps answer where those kids will continue to get it when they, next year.
I had a question. I believe I might be slightly late to the conversation, but I do want to completely understand this. How much do the, how much does it cost right now, the food program at Oceanview, for those 15 kids who are using it?
How much does it cost the food services program?
How much does it cost our district?
It's costing, I'd have to look at the numbers again. Do you have that?
27.
The loss was 2,700 annually. So a little under 3,000 annually is, is our loss.
Okay, and, and that's for 15 kids at Oceanview and that's a hot lunch or it's that, that, excuse me, hot breakfast or that's a cold breakfast?
It's a combination. There's a hot item and-
Okay, so I think right now, just what I'm confused about is, is also how we got to the 20,000, 16,000 numbers. Because if it's 15 right now and we're assuming that it would be 15 at four sites, then wouldn't it just be four times 3,000 or 2,700, right?
I think, I, I think the numbers were built with additional transportation costs-
Okay.
And you have to have then four people who are running the, the-
POS.
iPad, you know, like, and so there's additional costs related to running the program at four sites.
Okay, okay.
I, I actually think that your math is spot on and that the numbers were kind of pushed up a little bit to skew the vote.
Well, I, I mean, I think that either way, I, I don't think, I think that the numbers are extremely important and we are the school board and obviously, we have to care about the numbers. But, I mean, I'm looking at some of these comments and I'm also just like looking at my own values. One of the comments is, "Serve breakfast to poor kids like mine, two of the 15 who eat at Oceanview every morning. I don't care the financial loss, kids must be fed." And I think that's very true. We do want to be giving breakfast and I think that's like a general consensus we all have. You know, like Brian said, we are all on the same team. So, so I think that we do want to be giving breakfast to students who aren't going to be getting it otherwise. I also think that it is a very wise idea, like Ms. Poole was saying, or Melissa, I'm just used to calling you Ms. Poole. What can I say? I'm a student too. But I think that it is, if we are, if we are worried about the cost, thinking about how can we target students who need it most rather than spending it on, spending this, this, this extra burden on our district that we know is not needed for some students but is needed for others? Is there a way that we could make that program particular to students who are on free and reduced lunch program?
It would be awkward.
It would be awkward, yeah.
The challenge is, once you have the program, you actually want more kids to do it.
Okay.
Because it's, it's expensive per kid. So it's better, what would be better is to do a wide campaign to encourage everyone to eat breakfast if we were going to do it.
So is there like, so for Oceanview now, oh, first, your explanation was really good. I just was still like thinking and processing the information. So I'm sorry that I didn't like react right away. But thank you for the, is it like open to everybody right now? Do you have to like sign up or?
It's open to everybody.
It's just open, like if you're hungry, you come in and you eat?
Well, you have to do your little card thing. So you're either paying or it's free or reduced.
Yeah, just very quickly. The way it's set up is set up just like lunch. You have a point of salesperson with their computer. You're a student, you walk up. It may be your first time and it may be March 1st. If you have an account with the district, in other words, if you already buy school lunch or have a MyBucks account, all we do is touch your face on the screen and your account is charged that amount of money. If you're a free and reduced student, we do the same process. Nobody knows whether you're free and reduced or whether you're paying for the money because you have an account. So, you're absolutely right. If you want it to be paid for itself, you need to attract more students. The more targeted you are, the more everybody knows it's only these kids who get this breakfast. So the, so the opportunity to offer it to more kids, based on some of the limitations I'm trying to wrestle with, even for lunch, let alone breakfast, to me, I'm hoping you'll recognize that a bagged type of lunch, given at the time in which our, our breakfast, at the time in which our breakfasts or our recesses begin, really is an opportunity for us to kind of pilot or think about how this program might work. You can put a bagel, a muffin, a juice and a piece of fruit in a bag as easily as you can. A breakfast bar or some, and some variety. We have a nice menu that we go through and most of what the kids get, generally speaking, it tends to be more towards the cold breakfasts. The thing I would worry about around, especially if it has to go into the classroom, would be the milk. Because you, you don't want milk in the classroom spilling, especially if you're serving kids every single day. The teachers are going to have to address the time taken to eat, which would be during perhaps their, their, their instruction time, but a lot of districts do it. The difference is, we may be serving three or four kids in a classroom at most, where a lot of these other districts probably serve 80 to 90% of their students that breakfast. So that would be the classroom time taken. But for the annex, I'm really concerned about what resources, what space I have, because the only lunch space I have is the same space that Drama is using. And I understand they're using it from 8 o'clock, perhaps even into the evening, and I get a two-hour window for lunch to use that space. And we have to share the space to serve food and eat food. So to add breakfast, I'm hoping that what we consider really is something that can be successful and not bite a bigger piece of the pie, find something that we, we can offer, that we can do successfully and see how it goes, see who's attracted to the program. Because again, at Oceanview, the majority of the kids who come in my, my multipurpose room to use that space don't eat the breakfast. Doesn't mean they can't and doesn't mean many of them don't from time to time. And it's a great way to get kids who may struggle getting to school in the morning. If you say, "Hey, your friends are there, they're playing hoop, they're playing other games, you can come and visit, you can sit at the table, you can socialize," just kind of like an early lunch. And some of them eat, but not all of them eat all the time.
I had a question and I don't know if it would be for Jackie or for food service, but in general, do we run a deficit or do we have a reserve in the food service fund?
Sure, you can go ahead for the current years.
For the current year, we are not on a deficit.
And I remember from some presentations in the past that we had a nice amount of money actually in there. It just, I'm sorry for not asking earlier, you know, it just kind of dawned on me when this discussion came up, that I kind of remember we had a pretty healthy reserve in there. Because I think I had asked, can we use some of that money for some of our other general fund stuff? And I was told, no, it's separate. So if we have a big cushion of money in there to give it a roll for a couple of years and see how it goes if we take a hit, based on a lot of the responses from the survey, especially when Val had mentioned before, if you look at the percentage of people who said they would use it, and then the second question was, well, I'm not going to use it, but I think people should have it. It flipped. So if we're talking, whatever the numbers are, let's say 16, 20, 30, and if we have a couple, I don't know, I thought it was a huge number, like 100,000, I mean, it's, it's kind of relevant if we're talking about, it's separate.
I think, well, she's, if she's able to look this up. I think the idea of a pilot is a good idea so that at the end of the year, you can look and see how much money was spent. I think the question is, do you want to pilot a cold breakfast versus piloting a hot breakfast? Because the, the pricing would be different, correct?
Slightly.
So, it might be worth considering doing a pilot of a cold breakfast for this first year, or even at the semester mark, you know, unless I have to work for a year, you can look at it by the first semester usage of it and see if, if there, if there is- look at it by the first semester usage of it and see if, if there, if there is deficit spending and there is a bit of a reserve, you're at least responsibly digging into that reserve as opposed to maybe a hot lunch, so.
To just follow up on that, a lot of the, not the yes, no, but the comments were like, rightfully so. They were concerned that if we ran a deficit, that it was gonna have to come out of the general fund to cover the cost. But if we do have a nice cushion in there to do what people, I mean, we sent out a survey and people were saying...
Can I add something to that?
Sure.
Breakfast is not the only cost to consider because there are, you know, labor costs that are going up and there's also, I'm thinking a lot about the lunch program that's happening at the AMS Annex with No Kitchen and how we're gonna do that. And so I'm just considering that there's gonna be costs involved in that. So whatever money we do have in reserves, it's not, it's not just sitting there, you know, for, that can be all spent on breakfast.
All right, well, I don't know for voting tonight or what, but I would like to get that information on how much money.
How much you have in reserves?
Correct.
I would like to have a time, a time trend on that. I think that there have been years when we've been in the black and years that the food service program overall has been in the red. So to see over like maybe the past four years, something like that.
Thank you, because I remember Cle was in here and at one point he was talking, when he came in, we were way in the hole. And then he took it way up and we had all this reserve and then we came down a little bit, but we still had a lot of money. So if we could find that, that would be very helpful for me. And like she's saying, just, you know, to see.
I think giving you the information, we can do that. I would not recommend that this board necessarily wait for that information. I mean, I think my recommendation would be is if we want to move forward with the breakfast program, that we do this as a pilot. We start it off with the cold breakfast, look at it at the semester mark, you can do it in January, take a look at your financials. By then, your first interim is done and you'll have more idea of what your reserves are currently at that time and to see if the program works. You can always make adjustments after the pilot and say, maybe for the 2021 year, if you want to move to hot breakfast program, you could do that. So for, you know, and I'm hearing again, everybody wants to have a breakfast program. My suggestion would be that we pilot it.
I like that suggestion. The only thing is, I would reverse it to where pilot it as the hot breakfast and then based on how it goes, based on the feedback, then adjust it to the, because, I mean, you said there's a slight difference as far as costs versus one or the other. The hot breakfast is what they currently do at Ocean View.
Combination, yes. It's a combination and like Terry said, they often, you know, we make ten hot items and sometimes sell all of them and some...
So you have like a, like a combination based on, because I'm assuming some students get there at like eight, ten, and maybe they don't have enough time to like sit down and eat, but like there's still an option for them to like grab something at least. So, you know, having, having the option for both, like students that get there, you know, early and they sit down, have a hot breakfast, great, and then...
If there is a place for them to eat and supervision, yeah.
Yeah.
I want to, I think that this is an interesting idea to do a pilot and I think that that's something that we could explore. But the difference between the bag breakfast and the facilities, I'd like to go back to the site administrators to see what program they feel like their sites could handle. And Terry, you have a extra job because you're having to think about the annex and possibly also the, you know, yeah.
So that's a really good question. And I think that given that we're, so much change is on our horizon, it's hard to answer that question with absolute certainty. I do anticipate more students being, using the Tupelo program next year. We've been told that our numbers are likely increasing and so I want to be prepared for that and I want to do it well. And I want to provide a program that meets the needs of all those kids and without understanding fully yet exactly how many kids we're talking about. But I think that given the conversations that have been had at the board around the need for childcare, I think we can't lose sight of that priority and we have to do that well. And I know that Anna's been working really hard to help make that happen and, you know, in partnership with, with site administrators. So given that the space that we are potentially talking about could be, is potentially shared with Tupelo, I can't say with certainty. If the numbers are as small as, you know, fifteen, if we're taking Ocean View's numbers as a guide, if we're taking the possibility of fifteen kids, I could put fifteen kids to keep, you know, and to keep staffing and supervision clear too, right? There's issues that arise when students are being supervised by different people, right? It even happens with families at the park, you know, who's watching these kids? I thought you were watching these kids, you know? It's important to be clear to staff and to students about who's supervising them. So that's an additional cost, an additional piece, which means somehow separating that out. On rainy days, I am concerned. That's a lot of kids in the multipurpose room at one time. And we've been having a lot of those lately. You know, like I said, I feel like this is a question of priorities at which you get to define, you get to help us clarify in the way that you vote. And I feel like, you know, if, but I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be honest if I wasn't say, if I didn't say that I wasn't a little bit nervous and might need some support to help make sure that not only Tupelo is run well within the space allocated, given our change on the horizon, but also a breakfast program. I mean, I feel like, you know, that's, when we're dealing with kids, that's, we have an obligation to make sure that what we do, we do well, right? This is, and I appreciate the idea of a pilot and, and understanding that if space is an issue, if, I'm not sure what the issues would be with a custodial, with a custodian's union in terms of adding that to their duties. I mean, again, if it's only fifteen kids, we can probably make that happen, but beyond that, it's, it's hard to tell. And I want to be cognizant of the fact that our colleague Heather Duncan is not here tonight too. And I know that there are space considerations at Cornell. She's been reaching out, she's been working, I believe, with the YMCA about the possibilities of them using her multipurpose room next year. I so don't know the details and can't speak to that, but, but there's space considerations there as well, so.
From your, from your answer, you didn't differentiate, so between the hot breakfast and the bag breakfast. So I'm taking what you said to mean that it, you know, either, they don't make, that doesn't make any difference to you? You still see the same problems?
No, well, yes, yes and no. The supervision piece is definitely, we need to be aware of that because little kids need help with lunch and little kids need help cleaning up for sure. But if the bag lunch, if we didn't need to use the kitchen, yeah, if the, thank you, sorry. If the bag breakfast was not needing the use of the kitchen, then yeah, that we could put them all in the hallway. That is a possibility. It's not ideal that it's a chamber that echoes. It's not ideal, but if you're asking how to make that happen, that's what that would work. That's what that would look like, so.
So with the annex, the real challenge is that the only space we have to serve food is, will be the Drama Room at the same time. So I don't have access to the annex during that time of the morning, at least the way I understand the scheduling at the time. So everything will be done outdoors. So given that we already don't know how hot lunch is gonna be served, we don't have a facility for food, we're gonna have to truck it over and put warmers and share the dressing space within the Drama Room for it. It's just the logistics. It's hard to work out the logistics in a space I haven't worked in yet, but I go back to piloting what you know you can do successfully and then build on that. My fear is starting with something hot at the annex when I'm not familiar with the space and what little space we do have available until I know how lunch is gonna be served and whether the lunch is brought in something hot and then taken away because we don't have any space to store the heating units, which we haven't worked that out yet. I would recommend a cold breakfast. I could put a picnic table out there, they could sit at the picnic table if I needed to, I could put two. We have them in that room, we could pull them out. I'm already comfortable with what it takes for a custodian to take care of it. It's the same kind of issues around recess if it rains, but recess time when it rains, teachers open up their rooms anyway. So we would just need to make sure that what we can take into the classroom can be cleaned easily. So that's why I kind of lean towards the cold breakfast. The high school is a different challenge because you're gonna have high school kids and fourth, third, fourth, and fifth grade eating in all likelihood out of the same facility, the same lunch space. So it's just gonna require supervision. My supervision in the morning is not paid supervision, it's teachers. And the play space at the high school is at Memorial Park, which is almost a full block away. So eating and then recessing and teachers supervise the recess only. And there is no fences and it is not private, we cannot kick the public off it. So we will be watching the public mingle with our students in the morning. So I will have two spaces to consider plus the walking space, the space in which students in the morning eat, the distance in which they walk to the play space, and then the supervision while we're out there. So the breakfast is just a complicated piece. I think the food service piece is there because the high school students already eat breakfast, the space is already there. My concern at the high school is more around supervision.
Jackie, did you find those, those numbers?
Sure. So when we budgeted at the beginning of the year, we budgeted that we will have about ten thousand as a reserve. However, at the second interim report, we are showing about fifty thousand, so it's about forty thousand up. And I will have to say the main reason is the salary differential of the previous chef and the current chef. So now it's, I'm showing about forty eight thousand.
Reserve.
Reserve.
Thank you very much.
For a quick comment, the picnic ta, the setting up the tables, I think is a really awesome idea. You could also just put those trays with the warmers, throw the candle under it, hot breakfast on those same tables. The trays, I believe they sell at the Dollar Store and I have like a lifetime supply of those candles that I could donate.
Well, the first thing I would come up with is at a school serving food, you want to take a look at health code and find out what the health department thinks around putting flames near students who are getting food. So we want to be cognizant of that. And then those are chafing trays, which you put water in them, it's not just a candle. So you have a chafing tray with about an inch to two inches of water and that water gets very, very hot. So those would be some, some safety concerns that I would think about as far as serving something hot. And then the labor it takes to set that all up, tear it all down, clean it up. You're kind of adding some extra dimensions that could add complications to it.
I have a, I have a question about the labor, labor aspect that you're talking about right now. And this is a very creative and possibly impossible idea, but I know that students at the high school, and I think even at the middle school, but I see this as being more feasible at the high school, I know that students at the high school have service periods and I'm wondering if there's any possib, no, okay, cool. That was it.
I guess that'd be great.
You, you had thought that, okay, yeah.
Yeah, and the board questions that were sent and the responses that came back today, I just want to make sure I'm understanding it. I don't know if that's possible to put up, Julie?
I don't have it on the...
It was, it was a question, they're talking about Tupelo breakfast and then if it was gonna be at the other places, it says ACC, Cornell, and then it says menu. All whole grain and all served with fruit and milk.
Sorry, that menu on there is not the correct menu. I apologize for that.
So where it says French toast and pan...
That's, yeah, that's not currently what the Tupelo program is getting.
Is that what the current hot breakfast menu is?
Those are the pancakes and the...
French toast?
French toast, yes, we do serve that at Ocean View.
It's part of the hot bre...
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Given the concerns that you mentioned at the annex in particular and given what you had said, Superintendent, about a pilot program, could, could you start on the easier part, which is with like a bag breakfast and then, and then start trying out after a month and you see what the issues are, then having the cold breakfast and then ideally move to a hot breakfast later on after you're comfortable, well, yeah, with the site, et cetera? Is that a possibility?
Sure, I'm, I'm willing to look at it.
So I'd like to add to that. So I think on, on the food service side, probably within a month she could logistically make it work. I want us to be mindful that we will be transitioning kids to the annex. There's a lot that's gonna happen in that transition. So a month, I mean, I'm looking at my two principles and I just saw like they started to shake a little bit, which is why I said at the semester, because then you're, then you're gonna get, I think, a truer picture. If you do three or four months, it gets September, October, November, you still got kids coming in and out in September, lots going on. If you could do this even like say into, into December, then I think you're gonna get a much more true picture of some of the quirks that they can work out, maybe they've already worked out. A month in, they might say, well, we have these issues, but they may not have been able to work it out themselves. So I'd say, I like the idea of a pilot, I just think give it a little bit more time than a month.
I'd like to propose a motion that we pilot a cold bag lunch program at the annex, at Marin and at Cornell for next fall.
I disagree with that motion.
Well, let's wait and see if there's a, if there's a second, then we'll vote on it and you can...
Well, he can do it.
...put your own motion.
Yeah, he can propose his own motion, yes.
I second.
Can we have a roll call?
I would like to talk about it first.
Oh, okay, yeah, we discuss.
Can it be broader, your, your motion in the sense that it's not definitively this or that, it's once again for several months, whatever, whatever time? I mean, I think, I think the principals can make that kind of determination as they go, as long as we keep it open and not define it so rigidly, then they, as time goes on, can see, are they ready to do another step? You know, start off with bag maybe because that's the easiest and then they can see if it takes them two months or one month, because who knows? We don't really know all the different elements of it. And just, just let it play out and not, not define our proposal at this moment as to it's gonna be this way or this way and, you know, just keep it open for them, for the staff to make those determinations.
I'm, I'm fine leaving it up to their discretion, okay?
I, maybe they can, wouldn't you want a clear proposal about what you're being asked? Or do you want the leeway? I would like to hear, because I'm thinking of, I would want to know exactly what to charge, well, this is what we're doing.
So I just want to make sure I understand the potential proposal. So rather than proposing that we start a pilot and having it run for the first semester, having it, or December or whatever timeline you identified, Val, have it be, have the timeline be flexible to site administrators? Is that what you're proposing?
Have the options of the food.
Oh, I see.
So that you start off, the food would, it would all start in the fall and that, but it would be open to you to determine. It seems that a bag breakfast would probably be the easiest for you, given, given all the different components.
It sure would.
We're not supposed to do what's easy. We're supposed to do what is best for the kids and what's right. We're not supposed to just do what's...
Kids like cereal and milk. Kids like the, the food that they would provide, a cold breakfast.
They also like candy bars, which would be even easier.
No, but we're talking about something that's been approved. I mean, you know, it's not something that...
That's fine. I usually don't interrupt, but I'm sorry. And that's the first time that I've ever interrupted, actually, so I apologize.
So I'm just saying, you know, Kim's proposal, but just open it up, that we would start in September at all the sites, but it would take form in terms of whether it's a cold breakfast, you know, the cold breakfast or whether it's a bag breakfast, that's a determination you could make. And then my thought earlier was that we would have it like a month for this and then we move on and, and try something else and, and see how the kids respond. The kids might like a bag as, as opposed to a hot meal or as opposed to the cold, the cereal.
So I think that, to me, when I think about the possibilities of hot and cold, I think, I think cost, I think space, given the use of the kitchen and the multipurpose room. So yes, a cold lunch seems... Sorry, I keep saying that, I know, I guess I'm not... Sorry, I keep saying that, I know, I guess I'm not used to that in Albany here, right, it's a change in making, sorry, my apologies. So yeah, so cold breakfast would be more implementable. I can see that happening, especially with the numbers that we're talking about. Given the use of the kitchen and the multipurpose room and growing Tupelo numbers, that seems like a significant challenge. I also want to say too, during the first month of school, this is going to be a significant challenge to transition period, with Ocean View moving, you know, Cornell and, and Marin taking two classes, adjusting to the schedule. It's going to be a significant change across the board. So I think that it's going to be hard to tell about much in the first month. So I do, if we're going to try it, then I do agree that the first, you know, giving it a fair shot, if we're going to do it. But shooting towards something that we could do well, which I feel more comfortable saying that I could do, I could possibly take on the, the cold breakfast, so.
Okay, so I, the motion has changed. I move that we pilot a breakfast program that would take place at the AMS Annex, Marin and Cornell, and staff will determine the, the nature of the breakfast. More discussion, or...
I think that also something to add to that would be advertising the food pro, the breakfast program at Ocean View more, because I was looking at the comments and there's one person who said, I didn't even know that this was available, but I'm interested in it. And I'm sure that's something that a lot of people think, because I, I know that even me in elementary school, I didn't know that. Or actually, it was me in middle school, but I didn't know it was like, something like that was available, my family didn't know that. And knowing that, we probably would have utilized that program. So I think that maybe in addition to your proposal, advocating it more at the Ocean View site would be helpful, because then we could get further up to that 184 number.
Great idea.
May I ask one, I'm so sorry, do you mind if I ask clarification?
Sure, sorry, go ahead.
Okay, I wanted to ask, because your motion was to let staff determine which program. I would like to add that whatever the program is decided, that it is the same across all three sites, and not one site says, I'll do hot, one, one says, I'll do cold, because then you are going to have an equity issue. That whatever the decision, it is the same program, yes?
That's just a different way of, that is a really nice and creative way of just having it be a cold breakfast. Because if they say logistically, one site can't do a hot breakfast, and you're saying, make it the same across the board, that's really just saying this cold breakfast across the, because they'll just say, oh, we can't do hot breakfast at the annex, it's not logistically possible. So then if you say, okay, well, that's just how, it's the same across the board, well, then that, it's the same as just saying, let's vote to do the, the cold breakfast. Which I think will skew the numbers, because I think that people took the survey assuming that it was going to be a regular hot breakfast. I think that more kids would want the hot breakfast. All the research and the articles that I've read and everything that shows that discipline improves when kids have breakfast, test scores improve when all kids have breakfast, the achievement gap closes when all kids have breakfast. All those are based on certain breakfasts, but at the same time, if it's work it that way, then I think it's just, it's going to just be cold across the, across the board. Now, if we had it to where it's one way, and then if it, if it just really doesn't work, then it just really physically doesn't work. If we leave it, if we say, okay, administrators, tell us which way, you know, leave it up to them, well, they've already said that they're going to pick the cold, the cold breakfast. They've already said it, so we don't have to leave it up to them, we can just go with Kim's original motion, because they've already stated that that's the way that they want to do it. So I think the...
I don't think that's necessarily the case, though. I mean, Ocean View could continue to do the breakfast that they're doing now while they're still at Ocean View. So I think, I prefer the way you phrased it, that we allow the administrators to choose the breakfast. I think we allow as many kids as possible to have whatever option the administrators decide is workable for their site.
I, I have a clarifying question, Brian. Is it, is the reason that you want to have the hot lunch, or hot breakfast, because you think it's more nutritional for the students? Is that, is that what, or...
I just think it's, I just think it's, I just think it's better for...
They'll be able to focus better.
All the, all the, all the kids that I talked to, that, that, that's what they want.
Yeah, I, I think I would say I'm in agreement with that. But I also would say that there's so many things that we're balancing here. But I was just wondering to clarify so that I could understand.
I think that's a great clarifying question. I mean, I, we sent out the survey to the parents, I did the survey with the kids, that's who I asked.
So there's a motion on the floor?
I still...
Have you not had a chance to not go?
No, I've had a chance, but don't pilots normally have a start date and an end date?
I, I think it's for the fall semester, yeah.
But I mean, if it's just not working, is it just going to fold up in two months? I mean, this, in my opinion, it's not very clear what we're voting on. And it's only fair, in my opinion, if we do pass anything, that there needs to be clear direction. I'm not trying to take away decision-making process from you guys, but it, you know, I'm trying to think if I was on the other side and, oh, you're going to do breakfast and figure out how you're going to do it. I'm asking you, Val, I mean...
I, I would actually like to answer it, and thank you. So we do have, we do have a reserve, and I think it, I think we have enough of a reserve that we set a semester, whether, and even if it's not working and we're, we're going into some deficit. I think it is worth to do this for a semester and to see it through the semester. Because I think what happens in those months is it allows the settling down in September, it allows people to get used to having the breakfast, whether it be hot or cold, and then if there's any challenges that come up, it gives staff enough time to work them through before they say, oh, we're just going to quit the program. Give them a semester, so my recommendation would be that it starts when school starts, first day of school, which is August 27th, I think, and goes until the last day of, of instruction in December. That gives them all of September, October, November, and December.
But then, who decides if it's successful?
So that actually brings me to what I, your question kind of prompted some, it helps me clarify some thoughts that I've been having throughout this conversation. While it is clearly your charge to vote on this issue and decide this for our community, I really want to remind us, just as Board Member Weinstein did as well, that we are balancing a number of priorities here in our district. We are facing incredible change just on the, on the horizon. And I'm not just talking about, you know, student transitions and construction as if that wasn't enough. You know, we're facing a lot of staff, staffing issues at some pretty important levels where we get a significant amount of support. And I would say that it takes a whole lot more work to transition and do the job than just do the job. And the district leadership team next year is going to be facing a significant amount of transition. In addition to that, the elementary sites will be losing a TSA, which is a full-time support person, who, to help teachers and staff members throughout the day. We're looking at the possibility of losing clerical support, we're looking at our library techs who just got laid off. That to say, I don't want to muddy the waters, but it's, I wouldn't feel like I was doing my job if I didn't say that while, yes, in my heart of hearts, I feel like that's what every, well, let me back up. I feel like there is, again, if we could wave that magic wand and make it happen, you know, for kids who really needed it, let's do that. And we need to be clear, what I need to be most clear about is the process, is the process. Because next fall, when we're looking at less support, not by anybody's fault, I'm not throwing stones, it's just the reality of budget cuts and district-level transition, what is the follow-through going to be on this? And again, it comes back to taking a charge and doing something and then making a commitment to do it well. And if this is what y'all decide we need to do, I want to do it well. But I want to be really clear that if we do this pilot, who is going to be the evaluator of the program? I got my opinion, and y'all might not agree with me, and that's fair. So we need to be clear about a process and follow-up and support to make it happen. And, you know, and that's what's important to me, I guess I can stop there.
I think it might help if I answer it also this way.
Please.
My recommendation is that this be agendized for the December board meeting, and that data is brought back on cost. Data is brought back from the principals as to how the program worked, what the successes were, what the challenges were, what the issues were. You can very quickly put out another survey, this one took five days. You could put a survey out to families again, how many of you like the program, what you like about it, what you don't like about it. And then the board can make its decision on whether to keep the program going, how they want to keep the program going. I don't say whether you want to keep it or not, but maybe how you would keep the program going for the rest of the year. It may be that the board says, you know what, yeah, we're spending a little bit of money, but let's try this for another semester. But ultimately, I think it would be up to the board to make that decision, could easily agendize it for a December board meeting.
I want to point out to the board that we're now 30 minutes past time. And, and this item, because we were ahead of time when we started it, this item has, has been discussed for a very long time. There is a motion on the floor.
Can it be repeated, please, as clearly as possible?
Briefly. That we pilot a breakfast program at the AMS Annex, Marin and Cornell, that will run for the fall semester with evaluation on participation, logistics, and financial outcomes at the December board meeting.
A second.
Just to be clear, that if we just offered it at the annex, that means not all of the students going to Ocean View would get it.
In the fall, the Ocean View students will be at the...
It would, it would continue at Ocean View anyway.
Yes. They're not moving to the high school until the spring, but we should maybe clarify in the motion that we're keeping the program at Ocean View.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, yeah, so I wasn't speaking to the, the Ocean View program is, will be maintained as is. Okay, I heard a second, who was the second?
Me.
Thank you.
May we have a roll call?
President Trutene?
Aye.
Vice President Das.
Can you come back to me?
Sure. Trustee Clark?
Yes?
Trustee Hinckley?
Aye.
Trustee Turan?
Yes.
Student Board Member Weinstein?
Aye.
Student Board Member Mala?
Aye.
Vice President Das?
Aye.
Hey. I'm sorry, and I know we're taking time, but before my staff leaves, I, I do have a comment, if I may. Vice President Das, with, with all respect, you made a comment earlier that said that you felt that the numbers are skewed to influence votes. I want to assure you that I gave very specific direction to my staff to give me just the facts and the, or accurate numbers. I do not believe that Ms. Feinberg skewed any numbers, I don't believe that my staff skewed any numbers. I gave them very specific and pointed direction in our meetings to please make sure that they gave me the facts. And I wanted you to hear that from me, because I, I don't think that it was fair to Ms. Feinberg.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, that moves us to Business Services, item B, contract with Bowen Electric for Albany High School fire alarm repairs.
I'm going to turn this over to Jackie Kim.
Thank you. This item is to approve the contract with Bowen Electric to install component to the existing high school fire alarm system to create temporary solution in order to address the several deficiencies identified by the Albany Fire Department during their inspection on April 9th, 2019. And they gave us about 45 days, so we are in time constraint, and it's going to be about 55,000.
Board, are there, are there any questions on this item? I know that it is, it is not our wish to ratify contracts in arrears, we like to see things beforehand. But I, I think that the, the fact that we were given a very tight time limit to make these repairs, and the fact that this is a safety issue makes this exceptional in my eyes.
I move, is that appropriate, no? I move that we approve the contract with Bowen Electric to install the temporary solution for the high school, to get the fire alarm system.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're having, this also says, on the agenda, it's under review and action, but it...
It should be review and action item. And President Trutene, I really want to thank Chief Lance Cockins from the Albany Fire Department, who's been working with us and has been very, very flexible with him and his staff to supporting us, thank you.
I also think that we might need to thank the quick repair that was done in the, for the intercom system in the little theater, so that we have more safety there.
Yes, and that is Dax working with the person who did that, so that, yes, thank you to everybody on that one.
That was good news. Okay, and that brings us to piggyback contract with Southwest School and Office Supply for 21st Century Furniture for the AMS Annex.
I'll turn this over to Jackie Kim.
Thank you, and I'm, I'm sorry for the typo, this is also review and action item. So our project manager, DCA, engaged with the three different furniture vendors for pricing, and this is recommending that we are going with the piggyback method, which will provide us the best price. The piggyback documents are from the competitive, competitive bid submitted to Velvet School District in June 2018, and which provide us the best price out of those three vendors. And it will be about 3, 234,000 in bond fund.
And can you tell what fund that this is going to be paid out of?
I will have to check, but it will be the same...
Is this general fund or bond fund?
Oh, no, bond fund, but I wasn't thinking major B U R E, yes, but bond fund.
Board, are there any questions about the furniture contract? Okay, I, I had a question, and I don't know if it's possible to get an answer at this time, but I believe that this is furniture for about eight rooms, and only four rooms at the annex are going to be used by the middle school and have middle school-sized furniture. So I think that the, if we buy for eight rooms, that means that they're going to empty out eight rooms worth of furniture at the middle school main building and use this new furniture. Now that, that's going to be a benefit to the students, which is, which is great. But when, you know, years down the, four years down the road, when they have the use of the full annex, I'm not sure what's going to happen then. You know, more furniture is going to need to be purchased at that point. And I don't think at that point that there's going to be any bond funds left. So when they move this furniture into the main building of the AMS Annex and get, and displace four rooms full of furniture, I, I just want the board to be aware that means that there's going to be a furniture order coming that we don't have a, a source for down the road, is, is that...
You are, you are correct, I was able to get an answer. So when you order the whole furniture package, the four classrooms that will be, the classrooms that are going to be used by the elementary school, that furniture is going to have to go somewhere. So Deborah Brill is going to put the rest of that furniture into current AMS main building classrooms. The furniture that they have in their school, there is at least four classrooms of furniture that could be declared obsolete. Their furniture that was used when Ocean View was the middle school. So we would have to, as a board, go through the process of obsolete furniture, and there is a process by ed code as well as board policy to follow. So when all the schools are built and the annex, the annex is turned back to AMS, they would either need to put that furniture back in and buy more furniture for those rooms, or keep the furniture where it is, and, and then of course to buy, either way, you're going to buy about four classrooms worth of furniture. And at that point, yes, you're, that is going to be an additional cost. And I do not think it's going to be bond funded, but I really want us to be sure about that, okay?
So in four years, there'll be maybe an additional cost of the 234,000, another for, for another four classrooms.
For another four classrooms.
There would be half of that.
Be half.
Okay, it'd be half of that. And then my other question was really quick to, Ms. Kim, the piggyback method, do you have any idea how much money that saves us to go through that process, is, is that too hard to estimate?
I reviewed, but I don't remember on top of my head, but I can... But I can provide it to you on Friday memo.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the piggyback contract.
Second?
Nope. I just said et cetera. I'm not reading the rest of that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Michaela, you seconded?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and that brings us to appointment of Budget Advisory Committee member.
And I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Kim.
Thank you. This item is for the board to appoint members of AUST Budget Advice Committee. And we currently have two vacancies. One teacher's position... Well, two vacancies for tonight that I'm bringing in for applications. One position for teachers and another position for the parent representative. So board has received one applicant for teacher position and three applicants for parents. Yes.
Yeah, I just have a quick question before we get into that. I understand people sign up, you know, and sometimes stuff happens. But is it always necessary to fill a vacancy? I'm just wondering. You know, we set a certain number, and sometimes we try to cap that because we don't want to go above. But then what if... I mean, is it always best practice? Or I mean, it just... Now we're asking people again to step up. And one of these guys, if I remember correctly, he applied the first time and he didn't get it. And then now it's great that they're offering their service, but...
So the way that the board... We can double-check this, but I believe that the way the board set it up was the board determined the positions, not the people, the positions that need to be filled. So whenever there's a vacancy, it is incumbent upon staff to do its due diligence to try to fill those positions. Was that your question?
Yeah. I mean, it's kind of just mincing words, but need those positions or would like to? You know what I'm saying? When we say we want an ATA, we want to, you know, like... Is it required? Or is it... That's what we would like?
You know, I don't think it's required that you have to have specific positions. It's the positions the board decided upon. There's nothing that says that down the road the board can look at the configuration of the Budget Advisory Committee and make some changes if it wants to. For example, let's just say there's one position from a stakeholder group that you just could not fill through the entire year. The board could go back and say, we're going to take that position off and open up another position from another stakeholder group.
Thank you.
Okay, so the board has had access to these applications. And just to move us quickly toward our Budget Advisory Committee report, I wanted to ask for a straw vote. Board Member Clark, can you propose a way to vote on these three?
Thank you. If we could write a name down and hand it to Julie and have her read out the name, and that's secret, so it knows who it's from. This is who Jacob voted for. This is whoever voted for because I think that's the cleanest way to...
I would be happy to do that.
If anybody else has any alternate way to do it or if they have any objections to it, I'm fine.
I was just wondering if, since we are missing a teacher position, there is one gentleman here who is a teacher. If we could easily move him into that position, and that then leaves us with just three.
So when we make the motion to appoint them, I was assuming that Mr. Rigney would be our teacher...
Okay.
...elected.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay.
We hang on, I'm making...
She's making a...
Doing the real fancy paper here. Okay.
Just take one, pass it down.
There we go.
We all get one vote. So vote for your parents.
And state who you're voting. You know, I'm not trying to do a secret vote or anything, but just...
Oh, here. We got extra ballots.
Ooh.
Oh, that means we might go around two.
Take one, pass it down.
Thank you.
I'm going to run it down.
You run it down, sure.
Switch my legs.
You've got two votes, though.
I got this.
Yes, I gave you mine. Let's give more to Kim.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all of them.
Everybody?
So just to clarify, these are for the parent representative position?
Yes.
And you would just state the result?
I have one for Luke Nickerman. Another one for Luke Nickerman. One for Drew DeFavor. Am I saying that name right? A third for Luke Nickerman. And a fourth for Luke Nickerman. And some of the votes did not have names from the board members on them. So it did not have board member names.
Were we supposed to put our names on?
No, that's fine. It was supposed to be...
I put my name on mine, just for the...
I put my name on mine, too. I thought I specifically said it was supposed to be some kind of secret vote. But in this situation, it doesn't matter. But for future, if people agree that maybe this is the way we can, you know... We can discuss it later. But also, sometimes the order, sometimes we come this way, sometimes we come that way. And it just seems like...
No, I like this method.
I like it as well.
Yeah, this, I think, is very clean. Okay, so then we can make a motion that we're appointing Luke Nickerman as the new parent member to the Budget Advisory Committee and Mr. Christopher Rigney as the new teacher member.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, who made the motion?
Kim.
I did.
Okay, thank you. You seconded it?
I second it.
And that moves us to a review and discussion, Business Services, the Budget Advisory Committee report.
I'm sorry. You have number four, L4, Board of Education Alternates for Stakeholder Panel for Superintendent Finalist Interviews.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did miss that. Number four. Okay, so I can introduce this item. We are having our superintendent finalist interviews on Sunday, May 5, and Monday, May 6. We've appointed a stakeholder panel. The unions and various groups put forward their representatives. The board chose seven community members. If any of those community members cancel late or become ill, we might possibly be able to fill them with an alternate as long as they're... You know, as long as we're notified in enough time. I mean, if they cancel the night before, then it's simply not going to happen. But I was bringing this forward because if this does come up, I wanted the board to be able to choose the method for filling the alternate... So does... You know, actually, I would not like to be in that position myself. I'm supervising an all-day excursion for the AMS Band to Great America on this Saturday, and so I will be out of the loop. So if we... If the board does want to decide on, you know, a way to fill alternates, I would love it if one of you would step up to coordinate with Julie to do that.
I have a question about the need for... I kind of talked about it a little bit earlier, but on the Budget Advisory Committee, there was specific ATA folks, and there was CSEA. Here, there's seven parents, you know. And we didn't do alternates that night. It is starting on Sunday. It seems awful late in the game to have alternates. And it's my understanding that some people were upset that they didn't get picked. And there's been some discussions that have happened about who might be the alternates before we even talked about it tonight. So I have a real concern about the whole item itself.
The board could determine that we won't fill a position at this point if it becomes available. I just want to make sure that the board's will is carried out.
I kind of agree with Jacob that coming up with a mechanism... You know, we were very deliberate about... Speaking to the comments that were made earlier, we were very deliberate about not just taking people in order in which they were voted, but we were clearly trying to fill important representational needs. And I don't know how we resolve that by any of these mechanisms if one person drops out. I'm particularly concerned about just giving it to someone who took the time to protest the fact that they weren't picked because I think that's also not representative. And we wanted to be really deliberate. And without the five of us being able to deliberate about what we're losing from the person that's not able to attend, I don't know how to come up with a mechanism short of spending another three hours trying to figure it out. And it doesn't really seem worth it. I feel like seven community members... You know, six is a lot. Seven's a lot.
Okay, I will say that I... You know, I was kind of touched by the passion of the people who wrote. I thought, to me, it meant, ah, they really, really care about that. They really care about their next superintendent. So I kind of saw it as a positive. But I also see these logistical issues and that it might just not be the most representative thing to do. So we've heard from two board members. Vice President Das or Trustee Duran? Would either of you like to voice an opinion?
I've spoken. I'm going to give you guys... I still have something else to say, but...
I don't want to get in trouble again. I mean, it takes a lot to volunteer your time to do this because it's like going to take a lot. So if we have alternates, is there a way to like put all those names into a... I mean, I don't know. We like really took the time to pick the people in those spots, and we picked it for, you know, lots of different reasons. And we made sure that it was, you know, diverse and that they represented every group. So if we just kind of randomly fill people in, then if there is an alt... If there's a person that can't attend and there's an alternate that would then fill that position? For example, if somebody from the Black Parent Engagement Group was no longer able to attend, and then there was an alternate that also was from that group and then wanted to fill in, then that makes sense? Or if there's somebody from the Jewish parent group, and then that person wasn't able... So then somebody else from that group filled in? I mean, then that seems like it would make sense versus kind of just if one person falls out, then just kind of fill in that spot. Because we did like take the time to kind of, you know, go through. It's just my thoughts on it.
They all had a combination of group affiliations that would make that hard. You'd have to be like a Black Parent Engagement Advisory Group member and a member of this PTA and on, you know, this other... This thing as well to be the same, to represent the same group. So I think that any alternate would probably have a different set of affiliations. Maybe one in, you know... Yeah.
I mean, that's...
Board Member Duran?
I was just going to say that I think I agree with you that the fact that people got on it and were upset or whatever, that they care or that they want to participate, and that's good. On the other hand, we did spend a lot of time really trying to get a diverse group. And maybe we failed in one stance from one of the comments we got. On the other hand, maybe it just is a lesson for us that next time we might think about other kind of areas that we want to be sure are represented. And also that maybe next time we'll come up with alternates, that that's a lesson for us to learn, that next time maybe we should have an alternate or two as part of our process. So I'm inclined to just say, you know, that let's just move on at this point.
Okay. Then receiving no motion?
I still wanted to add one more thing. Everybody saw the emails, and people interpret emails differently. I've heard that people appreciated the passion, but I don't appreciate them saying that we weren't looking for diversity in our candidates. We were really looking for diversity in our candidates. We spent a lot of time. It was done in open session. And I don't have... But something was like, oh, here's the same old Albany again, you know? And it's just like, I'm hoping that we can move forward. We spent a lot of time. And to be accused of not looking for diversity, like we purposely somehow colluded and picked those seven. And then somebody said that, oh, I'm really surprised with the selections. It looks like it was stacked for one candidate. I'm not even sure what that meant. But for us to come up here and put in all the time that we do, you know, and we're trying to get the best panel together for a superintendent committee. And, you know, this job is just... It's very tough, you know? And sometimes when you hear stuff like that, you know, I need to say it. I need to call it out, you know? Sometimes people think, oh, I'm in the email mode, and I can go ahead and insult you and the whole board. And it's just not cool.
Actually, I was very impressed by the amount of representation that we managed to get in those seven community members. So I think that we did make very good picks. So without a motion, shall we move on to our review and discussion now? This will be Business Services, the Budget Advisory Committee Report.
So I wanted to check first. Do you... Would you like us to go through the report? Or did you want to start with questions that you had? Have you reviewed it? And would you like to start with questions? Or would you like us to walk you through the process a little bit?
I think describing the process, especially for those who weren't able to come to any of the meetings.
Okay.
The process, what you think the next steps are for you and what you'd like from us in terms of a response to this.
Okay, that sounds great. Do one of you want to start with background?
Sure. Yeah, we can start with the background. This is on the first page of the report, I think, 112 in the packet. So basically, for reasons detailed in a prior report, AUST has a long-term structural deficit of roughly $4 million. The specific amount depends on the size of the reserve fund maintained as well as other drivers that shift over time. So to avoid entering qualified status, the district must show that its budget plan allows for at least a 3% reserve in the fund three years out. The Board of Education asked the Budget Advisory Committee to identify at least $2.5 million in reductions for the 2019-2020 school year. The Budget Advisory Committee was able to agree on $1.3 million in cuts. The Board of Education approved a total of $1,460,000 reductions for the first interim budget. Several shifts in the budget outlook, including an upward adjustment to the state's planned cost-of-living adjustment funding and assumption of flat rather than declining enrollment, reduced the remaining gap for 2019-20 to an estimate $400,000, subject to changes noted in the key points later in the report. So this first report focuses on addressing just that gap, the $400,000. But obviously, long-term deficit will need to be addressed in subsequent reports and more meetings. And so then we had some basic principles that we worked on.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that... Yeah, I mean, I think to adjust... Just to address sort of the questions you had at the very front end of this, like that's a perfect background. The purpose of this preliminary report really is to focus on 1920 school year just because that's upon us now. And also, as it does say in this document, there were some things, just given the timing of when this group got together, that there were certain things that we couldn't do do just based on, you know, some timing requirements that exist as part of, as part of district policy, you know, in terms of like layoff notifications and that kinds of things. So that, as you'll see in the report, is that when it's broken out, there are some things we, we couldn't do just because from a timing standpoint, it was not possible. The other thing I would point out too is that in this, so the focus is on the coming school year. The focus also, for now, tends to be on, on budget cuts and where we can do budget cuts or, or the, the budgetary upside of inter-district transfers. There, we have also been looking at and discussing fundraising possibilities, both from a way to, to leverage some of the fundraising bodies that exist in Albany, perhaps to, to increase the fundraising acumen that's going on there, is how I would put it, and also looking at additional corporate sponsorships as ways to kind of financially backstop. That's, those are things that couldn't be implemented for this coming school year, but given our longer-term needs, there are things that we are looking at and that we hope will address a number of what might otherwise be budgetary shortfalls. So I guess, I guess the last piece would be, what are we looking for, for, for you guys? We want to kind of go through, I think that table, there are three tables that were outlined, one of which being, you know, here's what we would recommend, here are things that are possible but we don't recommend, and the third really being, here are some things that we looked at but are currently not possible for the 1920 school year. So we'd kind of love to get, given what Stephen said at the beginning here, given that we're looking at basically $400,000 that we need to come up with, quote unquote, to, to make the 1920 budget year whole, we'd love to get your thoughts and feedback on, I guess, the first table.
Well, yeah, I.
Go ahead.
I do think it's important, though, we have raised some key points and going into that, I think a few of them are really important to understand. One is that the, the 1920 deficit is likely to change from $400,000. That's what we had to work with. It was quite challenging and actually it was an odd experience because we had to spend a disproportionate amount of our time kind of focusing on this, this specific amount of money, which we couldn't really approach philosophically because of all the constraints related to timing, but we're looking forward to doing that in, in the future. But the kinds of things that are likely to change this deficit for 1920 are enrollment levels. That's a huge one. If enrollment is higher than it is this year, that'll be a good thing. If it's at all lower, that deficit starts to open up. If there's a change in the state's planned COLA, that will also widen the deficit if it, if it goes down, which is I guess what's been talked about. Obviously, if they raised it again, that would be good, but that doesn't seem likely at this point. And then contract, the contract, that's the biggest driver. That's open right now, all the contracts. 85% of our budget is compensation. Most of it is represented, so just as, I think this is just an important figure to keep in mind. Each 1% in salary is worth about $310,000 as an estimate, so it's maybe 3 to 4 FTE, just to have in mind of the scale of those shifts as it comes down and how that would affect the budget. And, and also unplanned shifts in the cost of the workforce if more senior people leave and more junior people came and that's a saving. So there's all kinds of things that are going to change this number, so that's important to know. And I think Stephen covered some of the reasons that our hands are tied on some of the items that we might look at. The other thing is, when you think about the SERP, the Supplemental Employee Retirement Program that was instituted, it's going to provide, that's already happened, it's going to provide $150,000 in savings at least. If it goes higher, when you looked at that, that means that we don't replace some of the positions that took the SERP at all. Most of those positions are concentrated in elementary teaching, so in general, when we do that, we're talking about class size. So we, we, just because of where those vacancies happen, so that's just an important thing to know, that if we were to, because if we don't fill the position because we decide not to offer a section, that's actually a net loss unless we also increase class size. That's the way that you would save money from, from that. And with a few other positions. And, yeah, so that's, those are just important things to know. Yeah.
Yeah. So I guess any, any questions about any of that or should we dive into the tables and kind of go over some of the recommendations and the pros and cons there?
I say dive in. Dive in.
Go ahead.
So yeah, that first one we kind of started with already, which is the, the SERP.
There it is, sorry.
And that's, that's not, I mean, we have it on here, our first one, recommendations, it includes things that are already happening to address the deficit, because this is money that wasn't in the $400,000, so it will reduce it, but it's, it's already happened. So that's, and that's the baseline amount, as I said, from the savings. And when you saw the range, when this was presented earlier, as I said, that, that the higher amounts of money come from not filling the positions. And then the next big one was increasing AHS enrollment, which you've also received presentations on in the past. The, the range represents how many students we attract. So right now, last I heard, there were seven students on the waiting list, that would bring that to 70,000 if they all are admitted and come and aren't offset by any departures. And.
So no, that's exactly right. I mean, just one way to think about this and prior discussions, you know, the, the goal was about 30, so if you really, I mean, this is a huge range here, right? 60,000 to 450,000, so, I mean, the goal would have been about $300,000, but the reason that the range is here is because, to Jessica's point, right now there's only seven people on the waiting list. We're, we're well short of that 30 goal, so, so that's, you know, arguably concerning.
Yeah.
Actually, let me interrupt there. I wanted to ask Superintendent Williams about if the board would be able to receive an update on new IDT applications at, during May.
Yes, we can agendize it and I'll ask staff to give me the numbers on any inter-district transfer requests.
As far as you know, seven is the current number or?
I don't know the exact number if it's more than that.
Okay, thank you.
But we know for sure it's at least seven.
So far.
That, that figure is one that I heard, I think, last Thursday, so I don't know if it's current. The, the next item, 1C, this is improving the efficiency of classroom distribution within the, the district's current class size targets. And that would be something that ties back into the SERP, only it's a little bit different. It, it would be increasing classes, but, class sizes, but I think addressing classes that are, in a couple of grades, our classes are lower than anticipated. We have, especially in the first grade and the third grade, I believe, a lot of classes that are running quite a bit below what the target would normally be. We have, you know, 21 kids in some of these and that's not really where the, the district plans to be. So by moving kids around, there, you could have classes that are well below the contractual class maximums, but use fewer teachers. So that is what that's talking about. I believe the district staff is, and the principals are already talking about this.
Can I answer? So there's a couple of different things there. It's, it's actually a much larger, larger situation than initially presented. That, I think that there's community schools, I mean, we're talking about how flexible can you be with students? So this is sort of a theoretical limit of like, if you could put any student anywhere to fill in where the district would like the target's numbers to be, that's something that you need to consider. And I think Superintendent Williams, while you mentioned that the principals are already doing that, they take all those things into consideration when they are in fact trying to maximize their class sizes.
Yes, there are several factors. They need to look at one of the, what the possibility of combination classes are, they need to look at siblings, they need to look at if, if students will have to move from one site to the other. However, with Ocean View moving to two sites, it loosens it up just a little bit.
The next one, which is actively pursuing inter-district transfer to maintain elementary enrollment if there are possible losses due to temporary housing, this is separated from 1E. We're sort of saying you could do two things. One, you could try to do enough transfer to prevent the loss, because that's going to be a huge driver in our budget situation, is if we have enrollment decline. And if we decline at the elementary level, then what we're doing at the high school is not going to really help the, the budget deficit. So that's a recommendation we had, that we need to be a little bit more active in bringing in transfers. And 1E, though, is actually using transfer to go slightly beyond this year's and make sure that we get closer to those district target class sizes in all classes. That's not the contractual maximum. The target class sizes which are on here are 24 for kindergarten, 25 for first through third, and 27 for fourth and fifth. So it would be, you know, there's a limit, I think, because of the reasons Stephen raised to how efficient you can be by moving kids around, so the idea would be, do you want to actually bring in transfers to try to get closer to those, those numbers? Because that would actually raise revenue. And now, these are sort of smaller, specific things. One is not, there's a, there's a teacher at the high school going down to 80% time and the plan is not to fill that 0.2%, so that's, that's a small savings. Do you have? The next one, this is something that might come up, that will affect the budget if the new superintendent comes in at a lower salary point. That, that's, it's not exactly a range, but it's something that will affect our budget in reaching the $400,000. And this is another one that really has to go to staff. The recently vacated positions beyond the SERP, voluntarily vacated positions beyond the SERP, may contain some other opportunities for reduction. Most of those happened or we found out about them too late to think about it and we're not really in the, in a position to look at those specific jobs, but they may, they may open up possibilities for, for some reduction. So we, our recommendation would simply be that that be analyzed and look for if there's any further savings in those areas. And I believe district staff is still working on the materials and supplies to look for further. We weren't able to identify as a committee any further reductions while we were meeting, but obviously if there are others. And finally, this is one we hope is a long-term one, but could start for this year, which is working toward increasing the ADA percentage. An increase of 1% in attendance is about $300,000. We're particularly interested in voluntary, sort of, people taking the couple extra days around spring break to get the good flight and that sort of absence, because obviously if people are sick or have those kinds of needs, they need to be out of school. But we're, we're hoping that parent awareness can be increased, but also incentives, including punitive incentives, negative incentives, could be used for particularly these kinds of the travel absences.
Yeah, and that's, that's probably a good place to pause, I would think. That's kind of a lot to, to absorb maybe, so. And these are, of course, the ones we're recommending. I mean, from here, the, the list gets kind of bleaker. So, so let's stop and take any questions.
Good question. Let me move this. I feel like the materials and supplies we keep circling around and we had a proposal from ATA around textbooks as well, it would be, it would be, I think we're at the point where this, we need a number here and I think we need to be, to ensure that the committee has the information that they need to figure out what that number is and explore some of the scenarios that have been proposed. So I'm not, I'm not asking you for a number now, I'm just saying, in the process, to have a, an unknown amount in this potentially, you know, very undefined range of options, I think we need to be able to narrow that down.
So I think what happened was at the first interim or previous of this report, there was about 10% cut at the materials and supplies. And after that, we actually went over those items and I also met with one of the ATA members. But I think we really, we reduced our loss, so at this point, we were not able to identify any other areas. I think that's how.
Yeah, I was, I was going to briefly editorialize on that one, that one, because it's, if there's anything there, it's going to be a very modest number. Like, you know, there's, there's one of these line items which was about $16,000. I mean, the savings that, that are available in this materials area would be significant, would be almost certainly less than that. So it's not, I mean, there, we could probably get, it would be great to get to a number, but it's not going to be a particularly helpful number.
Did you talk about the textbook proposal? Because that was a very specific and very large number of, I think the ATA's proposal was $280,000. I know it's.
Right.
Permanent savings, but did you talk about that?
We did. I think you went back to, to ATA at one point, we were talking about M&amp;S. Was it you or was it Chris? Maybe it was Chris.
Yeah, so we, we still don't have the quite number of just, like reproducibles, like what are the workbooks for certain things? So it would need those numbers, but it would also mean, obviously going back to teachers and say, you know, this is something, you know, can you do without and could we make that, make that happen?
I'd like to add to what you were saying about, are there things that we in the future can, can do without? When you look at materials and supplies, at this point, we, if we were to cut more, we would be cutting into site budgets and we've done a little bit of that already. However, I think that in ongoing efforts, while we may not be able to put a specific dollar amount, I think we need to look at where we are not going paperless. So at the district office, our HR department has done a lot of work to go paperless. Special Ed Department is harder, because some of that is paper, but I think that it could bear more review to see what areas could go paperless so that we're reducing our paper. And it's not just paper we're saving, it's toner, it's, it's all those components that, by the way, toner is very expensive. I realize that's way more expensive than paper. The other thing that might be helpful is if, maybe the BAC may want to invite Marie Williams to come and talk about the textbooks and consumables, because I believe that some of the consumables, we already have cut. I'm not 100% sure. Oh, she's nodding yes. So it might be helpful to invite her to come to a BAC meeting so she can explain to you what a textbook adoption is, what can be, what can't be, what can we do with, what can we do without. I get a little bit nervous asking, potentially asking teachers, we're not going to give you consumables and then we Xerox. So would that be helpful for the BAC to have?
Yes, that'd be great.
And so if I can add this comment further, on districts that continue to seek additional reductions, I think it's not based on what we have discussed, it's more of, I will look for maybe different vendors and see, you know, our contract, maybe we might have an area, so that's another area.
Just real quick, I just wanted to take a moment just to, you know, recognize all the hard work and the time that you guys put into working on this and putting all this together and just wanted to, you know, recognize that and, and thank you for that. I really appreciate all that you guys put into that.
You guys meet more often than we do.
Thank you. Every week.
It's been a sprint, yeah.
So I just thought it was important to recognize that.
Thank you.
I wanted to ask, these are basically then your recommendations for 2019-20, and you are now moving. And you are now moving on, right?
Yes, yes. And we're hoping to move, we actually scheduled a meeting for May 8th. We're not taking a hiatus, because what will happen if we do is we'll get late and we'll run up against the same deadlines again, and we'll be scrambling at the last minute. What we've wanted all along is kind of to have a chance to approach this more philosophically, but we had this sort of very specific deficit kind of breathing down our neck that couldn't really be approached that way. Or, so, yeah, we're hoping to move into that and to really be able to develop, you know, the longer, you know, some longer-term ideas.
Okay, so given that these now come to us, and it is up to us to go through them and figure out if we're able to do these or not. For example, I know Jessica, you've talked a lot at the meetings about increasing, bringing in students to make the numbers at the district class size levels appropriate, as opposed to 21, 22 students in some of the classrooms. And that would be a discussion that might, in a way, given the fact that we only have seven students, potentially seven to 10 students, whatever, currently interested in coming from outside the district, if we would specifically look at numbers at K5 to see where potentially we're low, and if we open that out, up to outside district kids, that might complement the number of kids that might want to come to the high school if we have brothers and sisters that all of a sudden say, oh, we can come, we can go too. So that, you know, you might, you might draw more students just by opening it up and being real specific. And I don't know, Superintendent, if that is possible?
Can you ask me the question again? I want to make sure I heard it correctly.
Okay, I want to know if staff is able to look at very specifically the numbers of students currently attending classes across kindergarten through fifth grade, or fourth grade, I guess it would be through fourth grade, to see what numbers we're low at?
Yes.
And if we could say, oh, there's four kids in first grade, seven kids in second grade, and put those number, advertise specific openings for inter-district transfers, and then the rationale that goes with that.
Okay, thank you for your, because you actually asked two questions. So I want to make sure I heard those correctly. So the first question is, can we get you numbers right now of where we're low? The answer is yes. We could actually, pretty much week by week, give those numbers. The numbers are going to move, okay? So when I look at, when staff looks at, how many inter-district transfers can we take in at elementary? I'm going to give you an example of this year. I knew that we had some spaces that were open. We then needed to determine how many spaces we could fill that would, one, not go over class size limits should someone move into Albany. So let's say there were 10 spaces open in third grade. I wouldn't fill all 10 with inter-district transfers. I would work with the staff to find out what are our trends of having people move into Albany mid-year. I might fill seven of those 10. So that's what I did this year. There were some that we took in as inter-district transfers for elementary at certain grade levels, but we left some space open. And sometimes they get filled, sometimes they don't.
Do you have data that shows trends, that whether they really tend not to be filled? Or, I understand, it's not, it's.
Yeah, you know, I would say that Carrie Nierheim's done a really good job creating a system where they pretty much can track things almost daily at this point. It fluctuates so much, it just sort of depends, and the fact that we have temporary housing might skew it a little bit. It might be an anomalous year. I would say more than likely, we want to look right around that sort of July time, because people do tend to move in or they enroll a bit later. That's actually more of the time when I start saying, okay, let's let inter-district transfers in, right around August.
I asked the enrollment coordinator recently about historic trends, which I think was part of your question. And she said that there just isn't much data. She wants to collect this data, but the way that we enrolled previously has, and the fact that it was, I think, mostly a paper enrollment system, it does, did not allow us to capture that, what the summer looks like, right? You know, like, you want to see, is there a big bump of people moving in, you know, at the beginning of August that we need to prepare for? And I don't think that we can do that yet.
Yes, but it is now electronic. Between Kristin and Carrie, they created an electronic tracking system.
I have two questions for the BAC. One of them, Stephen, you mentioned, I think you very briefly mentioned grants. It's part of the fundraising ideas for future. And I wonder if your committee would be interested in being the house for a subcommittee of people specifically looking for grants and volunteer grant writers that we could, you know, I heard about a grant, not a biggie, but somebody's trying to give money to West Contra Costa and Alameda. And we really don't have a mechanism within our district to take advantage of that right now. And so I would really love to find a home for a grant-writing group.
Yeah, no, I think, I think we could take that on. I hadn't really, you know, when I was thinking fundraising, I was thinking more, you know, more along the lines of what, like, school care does and what the PTAs do. But grant writing actually is, it's a great idea, especially if there are organizations that are looking for ways to give money. We should, we should make that easy for them.
Yes, we should make that very easy for them.
Yeah, I think that would, that would be great, especially if we can call on, you know, specific support, like, people that aren't necessarily able to be on the BAC, like, to step up for that, but that might have grant-writing expertise that could come in and maybe help us.
Great, okay, thanks. I'll coordinate more with you guys. And then, one of your items was increasing ADA. And I really like that idea, because that will increase learning, that's good for kids to be, you know, at their desk at school. And I wonder if we could work with site administrators and such to see where they think we could get the greatest gains in ADA and try to.
Hyperfog and breakfast.
You know, we ought to be able to get some sort of a program going to increase attendance. I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, it does, oh, sorry.
No, I was going to say, I think a hot breakfast in the morning would boost attendance.
I think one of the main reasons, or one thing that would be really helpful for parents and as a teacher, I didn't know this for the longest time, was exactly how much money is lost by each, you know, by the district every time that child is not absent. And it might, you know, if it's $40, but then you look at all the students in the school, and again, if that's, if that's happening even, you know, two, three times a year, then it's a lot of money. So just to, you know, things happen, we get that as teachers and as a district, but to just know what's happening when that does occur, and what are the financial ramifications of that are.
Yeah.
And whether we could have sort of a campaign, I don't mean spending a lot of time, but putting it out there so the parents understand what happens and, you know, so they know the money we're losing.
But the other piece, I think, though, is the response, because I think sometimes it's always framed about learning. And when you're a family with high-performing kids and the trip you're about to take is very educational, it's easy to dismiss that argument. And it's actually, teachers are very accommodating of those kids missing. Because, you know, the kid's saying, oh, I'm going to go, you know, on this Shakespeare tour or whatever. And so they accommodate, they make a way to make up the missed exam. But if they didn't, it might be a different story of how willing the family was to take the trip. It's a little bit harsh, but it's true that it's accommodating, because it's sort of, we operate under this idea that, like, oh, it's, oh, but it's okay, this kid. But actually, looking at LCAP data, I think, this came up in the LCAP, a lot of our, well, there's a big group among special needs kids, those are probably absences that can't be avoided. But then, the other kids taking it, I think it looks like a lot of those absences are about travel. Another thing I just personally would be interested in maybe a survey about is whether we had one, two-week spring break, if fewer people would, that want to travel to Europe outside of the high-priced summer, would find a way to do it without adding days. I don't know if they would, but that's another thing of whether the calendar could be made more conducive to.
It would make parents' lives slightly easier. I wouldn't have an argument with that. Like, February, then April, what, really? Anyways.
Okay.
Just saying.
I'm not going to touch that one, but the class size, so you have several in here, several items in here that are basically about the administration working with the principals to try to increase class sizes strategically, either with new kids or existing kids. Is that, what is the role of the board in providing some guidance in that? What do you need, is this something you're, I don't know who I'm looking at here, but sorry. Is this something you are just moving forward with implementing? Is this something the board should be discussing and providing some guidance on? You know, I don't, I don't think we want to just give sort of this blank direction of, sure, increase class size. I think we need to be, have a conversation about what that looks like, and where it's happening, and what your process would be for using that as a mechanism for taking advantage of the fact that we had some departures in elementary level and maybe at other levels. Anyway, so I'm asking you, I guess, how is that, how much can you, how much can and are you doing on your own, and how much should and can we participate in setting that standard?
So for the 1920 school year, I'm trying very, very hard to keep kindergarten at 24 to 1. I've authorized in grades one through three to, is go to 25 to 1, and then grades four and five to 27 to 1. That gives a little bit of wiggle room in case an odd number of students come in and you may have a couple of classes at 28 to 1. What we don't want to do is go above contractual limits. I think direction from the board that staff would need and probably would be helpful to the Budget Advisory Committee is for the board to maybe set us some priorities. For example, I'm making this up. Increase class size before you cut into programs. That would be, I think, a direction that would be helpful for us. Maximizing class size is at all possible, okay? Those kinds of directions, I think, down the road is going to help the Budget Advisory Committee, because in absence of that, everyone, rightfully so, is going to come and advocate for their program, right? Whether it be music, any other program. So having some of those priorities would help. I think the Budget Advisory Committee, when you get into the next two tables, kind of alludes to some of those kinds of things. But without that kind of direction, then the Budget Advisory Committee and staff is trying to decide what they need to do. I will tell you that I still am trying to cut as much as I possibly can at the district office level, if at all possible, understanding that already some of the impacts of that are being felt across the district.
And could I just, a quick clarifying, clarifying comment and then a small wrinkle. So there's, you know, class size has been a thing for our district for a long time. And there's two different things. There's a, what we have in this report is a district, district target class size, which is basically what the district is thinking they'd like to have the class sizes at. There's a contractual class size, which is way back when, when the contract was first being put together, when classes were a lot lower, that was already in there. That is a bargaining issue, so that is something that, you know, that the district and ATA is bargaining on. And so I just want to put forth that those are the sort of the differences in the district targets and what the contract language is to go, you know, that high. I just, it's tough. Our history of this board is that we want to have as low as possible class sizes, because that's the best for our students. And then we're also in a budget crisis, so.
So could you just clarify the numbers, the contractual?
Sure, there's, yeah, to the bottom. So contractually, kindergarten at 28, first through third at 28, and four and five at 29.
Okay, so the board sees the Table 1, Possible Actions for 2019-20 Recommended. We see the other two tables that are not possible but not recommended, and not possible for next year. So we do very much appreciate this work, and I think Board Member Hinckley kind of summed it up when, when she asked Val for about, you know, do you need any direction? Are you simply moving forward on these? So it looks like you've passed the ball back over into this court, and we appreciate all of this work, and the fact that you're meeting on May 8th and are starting immediately on looking at what can be done for next year. Any closing comments from the board?
I just wanted to say some of the same things that the other people said. Thank you so much for your time, I really appreciate it. I know you guys have been working really, really hard, and I could speak for the whole board, but speaking for myself, because everybody's saying it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We take these very, very seriously, so we will back on acting on this.
May I make a final comment? Because I know I will be in Budget Advisory Committees with you up until the end of June, but this is probably the last presentation that they'll make. It is absolutely my pleasure to work with you guys as a group. You're amazing, really smart, caring people. So from my heart, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're just about at the ending time. I was wondering how the board feels about pulling the Budget Reserve Policy item and just moving ahead to the Student Services Staff Report.
I was wondering if we were going to address these in any way.
It's really, it's, it's staff's initiative now to act on the Table 1 and present us with a budget.
And we've acted on some of these in the Table 1, so you'll see them in the end-of-the-year budget. And I can add information in that backup as to some of these things that have been changed, updated to.
Well, because I'm specifically thinking about, once again, a targeted class size, and if we are low, are you planning to develop a plan, once again, that will advertise to outside the school district? And if you wait till August, that's late in the game, do you have plans already for this area in particular?
So you're talking for elementary, class size? I can come up with a plan, but I would like to speak with the elementary principals first. But I can come up with a plan. I truly do not recommend at this point that we raise the class sizes higher than what I've already publicly mentioned as targets, only because this is a transition year. But yes, if there are spaces we can add inter-district transfers in, we will.
And you advertise them? I mean, it go, the message goes out there?
We haven't advertised in the past. We've had inter-district transfer requests, sometimes more than what we can fill. So, but we, I can ask Carrie to take a look at if there's a need to advertise.
The reason I'm pursuing this is because we somehow thought we were going to get 30 students at the high school like this, and we have seven to 10 at, maybe, at this moment. And this would be a piece that could maybe entice. And this would be a piece that could maybe entice or interest more families outside the district if, you know, siblings could come. So it seems to me that we'd be, we need to be more aggressive if, in fact, that is what we want to do, and that's certainly a place where you get some money.
We could use the same process and say we have a limited number of spaces in, I could probably say maybe elementary grades, because again, it may fluctuate. But yeah, we can use the same process.
And my question is, will you, and when will that happen?
I'm sorry?
When would that happen?
Okay. I really need to go back and talk to the elementary principals and Carrie.
No, I understand that.
It'll happen this year. It won't happen, it'll probably, I'm hoping it'll happen even before the end of the school year.
Okay.
Doesn't give us much time, but we, I think we could pull it off.
And then the other issue that I wanted to ask was about increasing ADA. That seems kind of like a, sort of an easy one, within our control, and $300,000 sounds great, too. And I'm wondering if you're gonna, you and the staff are going to come up with a plan that specifically details how to convince parents, or whatever. I mean, there's obviously different situations parents have, but in terms of how are we going to put it out there that this is really an important area?
Well, you know, actually, Clementina, I think that that would be a great introductory project for our new superintendent to work with site staff on, because it would be attendance, really, for next year, because our census days have already passed. And so I think that we should start strong in the fall on that. But I would hesitate to put any additional projects on to Superintendent Williams and her staff right now, because they are planning so hard for all of the transitions as we move into temporary housing.
Don't you guys have a SAR team, or a SAR team, or Student Attendance Review Board, or Student Attendance Review Team?
We do.
I mean, we could always add to that. I think it's definitely something that all school districts try to do, but we do reach out to parents and try to figure out ways we can help them to get their students here, but I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, you are correct. We do have a SAR, SAR and SAR team, but I think that what you're talking about is a larger project for like incentives to have students increase. And thank you very much. That's something I, I don't think I could take off in the last few weeks that I have here. I want to finish some of those things. But I think for the other piece is the advertising for elementary and district transfers, that can be a conversation that I'll work with Carrie and Marie Williams on, finding time that we can start working on this.
Okay, given that...
I want to extend the meeting to get through Carrie's presentation and get input on the board if they think that we can pull the reserve policy one for now. We just had a meeting late last night, and we're all trying our best to hear everybody and get out of here. I'm so tired right now.
Does he need to make a motion? Because I'm ready to second him to pull it.
Do we need a motion to pull the budget?
You need a motion and a second.
Yeah.
I would like to make a motion to pull the item, Budget Reserve Policy, and at the same time, extend the meeting so Carrie can finish her presentation, and then our last item. Second.
All in favor, well, aye. Aye. Let's do it. Okay. That brings us to Student Services, Promoting Safe, Supportive, and Collaborative Environments for All Students and Staff.
Good evening again. I just would like to commend the work of the high school, Ms. Ritchie, Ms. Ry Mueller, Ms. Hudson, all the work that they have done in this area of social-emotional learning and social justice competencies, and I'd like to turn it over to them as they're going to present. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Hi, Liz Ry Mueller, Assistant Principal, Albany High School. Do you guys have copies of this? If you don't, I'd like to pass that to you. So last year, the district developed a social-emotional learning and social justice competencies. They're for the entire district, and this is the work that we've been doing with them at the high school. It started with, this pie represents the competencies, self-management, self-awareness, skills to foster equity and inclusion, knowledge of societal inequities, responsible decision-making, relationship skills, and social awareness. First question was, why have the social-emotional and social justice competencies? This slide was written by Michelle Lauslime, our social studies teacher, world history teacher. She wrote for her students, actually, the SEL-SJC's are foundational skills necessary for children and adults to connect across race, class, culture, ethnicity, language, gender identity, gender expression, sexual orientation, differing abilities, faith and religion, learning needs, age, and all other identities represented in our diverse community. These competencies deepen our awareness, knowledge, social skills, and strengthen our relationships in our community. The district leadership team created the document that you have in front of you in the summer of 2017, and they were inspired by similar documents from neighboring districts such as Oakland Unified. Spent quite a bit of time, and they were adopted by the board in the beginning of 1718. There are common practices that TK through 12 teachers can use in their curriculum and encourage students to include in their daily lives. In the beginning, we started with an elementary poster. This is the beautiful elementary poster. It was created and distributed in the spring. It incorporated simple I statements for each piece of the pie.
And I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt you just for a second. Can we turn the lights on a little bit? But also, before you go on, she's being very humble and not telling you that when we were working on the elementary posters, it was Liz that I went to to help work with me on elementary language, and so what you're actually seeing, she had a really big hand in.
So there are simple statements like, "I know myself," "I include others," "I know what is fair," "I care about others." And those have been posted at the elementary schools for the last two years. We introduced it, the document, to the staff at the high school in the first staff meeting of 2017-18. We also shared it with stakeholder groups, site council, PTA. Principal Ritchie has been including excerpts from them in her weekly newsletters and in the bulletin, usually targeting specific things that might be appropriate for the time of year, or maybe an assembly that we had, when we had the Holocaust Survivor Assembly, for example, she picked some pieces out. And then we also began in 1718 for a secondary poster project. We began to implement in 1819, and in order to create a more welcoming culture, we decided at that time to make seven different posters, one for each piece of the pie. We felt that high school students had needed more information from the competencies, and so we involved the students. Mary Flo Hudson and Ms. Ritchie and I worked with nine different student groups to craft the language, take the language that's in the document that you have, and make it more For example, we took this language on self-awareness that's inside the document, and we asked the students to interpret it, and then they came up with the self-awareness, and they wrote, "We are aware of our words and actions, we share the space, we learn from mistakes, we believe we can grow and improve." So each one of the posters that we created, I brought an actual one to show you, they're this size, each one, for each piece of the pie, has interpretive language from the student groups, taking what, as I, again, what was in the district language, or the adults' language, and then a different one for each piece of the pie. Self-management, social awareness, I particularly like some of these, like, "We respect others' identities." "We flow between diverse groups," I love that one. "We flow between diverse groups." "We value consent," is an important one, "on relationship skills." Understanding inequities. "We recognize our privilege and use it to right societal wrongs." Fostering equity. We specifically chose "we" statements, and we did make them the positive, that "we are doing these things." But we also understand that we still have a lot to learn about them, we're constantly learning them, we're constantly incorporating them. We don't mean to imply that we've, we've got it all together. We mean to imply that these are our goals. And responsible decision-making. Another good one there is, "We resist harmful social pressures." So now the posters are hanging up in the school. We have different activities like the Hello Week and the Challenge Days. We incorporated them into our WASC goals and our CIPS goals. Teachers are requesting posters for their classrooms now. This is just happening right now, the last couple months. And Mary Flo Hudson has been writing about them and including them in advisory lessons that go into the weekly newsletter for faculty, different ideas of how to incorporate them. Remember, they are not a curriculum, they are not meant to be, they're meant to enhance the curriculum and be used as support. And then one of the purpose of the posters is to be anchor, so that you can point to something and say, "Hey, we flow between groups," right? Here's an example of how our staff, I was really proud of them when we wrote our WASC, our WASC self-study. They included two specific action steps, incorporating this document, asking for professional development, and communicating them to students in the community, which is something that we're doing right now, at this moment. And then here's the posters in action. That's Emily Surawitz, a teacher, talking to her IHS class about some of the posters that are in the hallway. We also did some data. We did a survey, I started back in November, and I surveyed, I asked the IHS teachers to survey the freshmen in the IHS classes, and we asked two questions, actually asked three. Have you heard about the document, and have you discussed the document? We did see growth from December to April, up from less than 5% of the students had heard about it, it's back in December, to now over 25%, or about 25%, and the same kind of numbers of whether or not they have discussed it in their classes. The other question was about whether or not they had done activities or projects, and that stayed really low, less than 5 or 0%, because the teachers have had a chance to work with them yet. And then on this interesting data point that Michelle Lauslime did with, surveyed all of her social studies classes, she asked, "Which one of these do you do best, and which one of these do you want to work on?" Particularly interesting to see that they felt that they were, that they were really had good self-awareness, for example, and relationship skills and social awareness. These particular group of students wanted to work on self-management, responsible decisions, and relationship skills. So I'd like to end with moving forward. You know, these are our competencies, we, you adopted them, and we invite your input, everybody, everybody's input in the community, the school community, to become familiar with them, and to include them when you can. There's lots of ways to include them. And if you have any questions, I know it's late, but I could try.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Assistant Principal Rommular for that presentation. I've seen the posters on the wall next to the main office in the school, and I've seen people looking at them, and I love to look at them. The way that the student groups transformed the language to those short statements, I feel is really powerful, and whoever came up with that idea is just brilliant, because those are the statements that will speak to, to the high school students. I also wanted to just mention that, you know, there was an uptick in attendance at the high school, and I think that that's related to things like these social-emotional competencies that have made the high school feel like a more welcoming and inclusive space. And so you have more kids coming to school and staying at school, and, you know, not skipping out. And so I congratulate you and everybody who worked on that, because I think it's, I think it's a beautiful project.
Thank you. I think that it's a great document, and I think that, I hope it sticks around and people pay a lot of attention to it for a long time, because I think it, it holds weight and it matters, so.
It does. Board?
Okay. It's great to see. I have no questions, but I'd love to line my house with the posters. Need my future high schooler with some ideas.
They can be copied and copied, Matt. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And thank you for staying so late to give us that presentation. Now we're at the end of our meeting, we need to go over agenda items introduced by the board.
Thank you. We have the district reserve policy that we're going to move. I believe we can actually agendize that for the next board meeting. The inter-district numbers, is that something that we can provide to you in a Friday update, or do you want that agendized? Friday update?
Friday. Getting them frequently would be helpful, so a Friday update.
Friday update would be great, okay. And then, so I would say rather than this Friday, give us maybe one more week to just, yeah, okay. And then in December 2019, to agendize breakfast program evaluation. Those are the three that I had so far.
I also wanted to ask you, you gave an update on bills in the Assembly, and I think later start times was one of those that has moved forward again. And also, I believe that there was a presentation at the high school by a group of students about later start times. And also, I think that the Wellness Committee has still been working on that. Are we going to see a later start times item come back to the board before the end of the year?
I actually would like to see that come as well. I know you all are really tired, I'm sorry. Just for the board to know that the next two meetings, I'm sorry, the, yes, the next two meetings that we have are going to be long, because you have the work-study session for the secondary school plans and elementary single-school plans, and then you have a full board meeting after that, and then June is pretty much getting full as well. Dr. Nierheim, did you want to say something?
I'm very excited to report that we did do the parent survey for 8th grade through 11th grade parents on the later start times. We had 519 responses, and 74, approximately 74% of those respondents would like to have later start times. Our next Wellness Committee meeting is May 22nd, where we were going to go through the data and bring it to the board. So that is my intention.
So we, we could, I know we have a little bit of time, space, I can put it on the last June meeting, would you like that as a review and discussion item?
Yes.
I'd be happy for my last board meeting to talk about later start times. Okay, I will add that in the June meeting as a review and discussion, or would you like it as a review and action, and so that if you wanted to take action, you could?
Yeah, let's do that. Let's do that.
So Superintendent Williams, I will not be at that board meeting, but I will have all the information prepared.
Thank you, I will need that information.
With that, we are adjourned.